Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Oshkosh Board of Education for Wednesday, March 11th at 2, uh, Wednesday, March 11th of 2015 at 6:00 PM. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please call the roll.
Tito.
Here.
Eliason.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Lemberger.
Saginac.
Here.
Weidenhoff.
Here.
We have a form.
Tonight will be led in the Pledge of Legions by two students from Oshkosh West High School, Dave Mathers and Teresa Searing. Please rise and join them in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is tradition in these occasions, we offer you both a certificate of appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you both for having me in this slide. Okay. Uh, next, Board President's Report, I actually have at least two things I'd like to say. I may end up postponing a bit of my report until the end, but I did want to make mention at least of the concert that was had on Wednesday night by Mr. Mark Wood. And, uh, actually, there's another one on Friday. To Dave Mathers and his counterpart from North has a scheduling conflict tonight, also doing an orchestra event that is a Fox Valley Orchestra gathering that he needed to be at a rehearsal, I believe, for. And so, um, we have only a report this evening from, uh, West High School.
Thank you very much. So hello, good evening. Here is the Oshkosh West presentation for March updates. Start off this evening, I will talk about solo ensemble. So this Friday, we hosted this event, Inno and Fabulous. With five schools participating a day, everything ran smoothly. And firstly, I'd like to thank everyone that helped set up the sites going on at Oshkosh West. And, uh, we had around 850 kids perform their pieces with over 1,000 kids participating. Every year, it transitions to different high schools hosting, and then this year was our turn. With groups and solos performing, an array of kids from band, orchestra, choir, and playing the piano were involved. So this year, we had 22 judges, um, all designated in their sights. So congratulations on West, um, and having several students that may be going to state. So thank you, students, for participating. Thank you to our teachers for helping out, and thank you to WSMA. And, uh, along with the Mark Wood concert, I also have a slide on that. Um, so we had the wonderful opportunity of having Mark Wood from his Trans-Siberian Orchestra, um, to perform and rehearse with high schoolers and middle schoolers. I saw many posts on social media about students rocking out and both playing and listening, so that was really a fun thing to see. Um, and, yeah, it was just awesome music and through-the-roof music when I was walking by the auditorium. Thankfully, not literally, but, you know, it still was awesome. So a big thank you to SOAR for the generous grant to make this happen. Um, and, yeah, so several middle school and elementary schools got to participate in these rehearsals, and, uh, the concert is this Friday, so make sure to check that out. That's gonna be at Oshkosh West. So ACT testing. The ACT testing was a success, more than 95 percent attendance, and student governments paid for 800 granola bars. Uh, now, we had a meeting, uh, because Mr. Harrison, the assistant principal at West, uh, asked for us to help out with that because the students had a 15-minute break, and we thought that it would be nice if they had a snack. So thankfully, a little thanks to my mom for, uh, giving me a Sam's Club card. We went to, uh, Sam's Club and picked up 800 granola bars. That was the point. Uh, yeah, so having the entire staff available to assist was very beneficial, and we're, um, currently working on makeup assignments and planning for freshman and sophomore ACT Aspire testing. Also, a quick notice, CATS program signup. So it's Champions Athletic Training System. Um, it's our famous summer training camp. Um, so all students that are interested in doing this can sign up. The forms are available. It's for the summer, uh, but it's always good to be looking ahead, and it's an intensive camp that will get you into shape. Strength, um, training, and talk to Mr. Levine if you have any questions. It only costs $10. Um, there's a cool animation.
Very nice.
All right, congratulations to the academic team. They did a fantastic job at State in Madison and are continuing to Nationals in Chicago. This is their first time. They came to student government, uh, meeting this Tuesday and requested money to help with their travel expenses and admission costs, so we happily paid 350 towards their admission. And, uh, we're gonna advise them to help different ways to fundraise, um, because this is a really, really neat thing going on, and, uh, it was really, I was really happy to see this, uh, happening. So good work to Ben Adams, Sam Bickley, and Jonas Wagner, uh, for the A-Team going to So the student government's agenda. We're working in courtyard legislation. The courtyards E and W will be updated this spring, and we asked different questions such as how can we utilize the renovated area, um, to profit the students just as a whole? Um, and we kinda looked at something like we did last year with extending the library to an outside place, uh, where students could then utilize outside. We wanna do the same thing for the E and W wings because they're surrounded by different departments, but we'd like to see how those departments could then use that area. Uh, upcoming elections. So it's our second year using Gmail. Uh, the first year was a great success, so we wanna continue that. And, uh, all voting legislation passed, so, uh, we talked about making a Senior Approval Committee, um, through Jacob Langrath and his idea. Um, so, so that got passed, so that's good to hear. Student campaigning will be coming soon, so I, I suppose West will be filled with posters soon, so that's nice. Care Day, I'll talk about that in the next slide, uh, but we're sponsoring a bouncy house and dunk tank, uh, to help out with that day, which I will later talk about. We also ordered, um, our t-shirts, so a big thanks to Mr. Arps. We had a cool design submitted, or idea thought up by Mr. Mock, and it says, like, "Represent" on it, and then a student government, uh, like 2015, so it's awesome. So the upcoming care event. Care Days stands for Celebrating Abilities Rallying Everyone. They have the opportunity of 120 K-12-adapted PE students and 25 from 38 West students. So this consists of having a track meet with different carnival events and a big incorporation of both North and West coming together, uh, which you'll see the mascots there. It includes performance with marching bands of both schools and the Julie's Touches Silver Twirl Team. If anybody is interested in helping, in helping, contact Mrs. Bakula, Mrs. Kimble, and Mrs. Steinhelbert for just more info. And that'll be taking place in May, so we got a little time for that. Upcoming spring sports. With the nice weather outside, track already began. That was, it was great, um, to have practice today. The sun's awesome. Boys tennis is starting soon, um, girls soccer, softball, and boys baseball. That's all happening late March, uh, but it's on their way. And finally, with the last slide, we have the Oshkosh West Orlando Band Trip. Uh, that's gonna be happening during spring break, like I've been talking about. So we have the practices already beginning, and, um, yes, every Sunday with rehearsal and also included drum lines every Thursday. We're gonna be playing the United States Air Force Song, and the drumline cadences are arranged by James Edgerton. So I'm on my way to Florida. Pictures will be included in next presentation. Uh, those are from 2010, but I will get you those when we go on there, so. All right, thank you, have a great Wildcat Wednesday.
Thank you very much. Sounds great. Sounds like a lot of stuff, too.
Yeah.
Mr. Mack.
Yes, we will continue with the superintendent's report. As, um, every two-week period, I'm always amazed at how much is collected of fabulous events going on throughout the school district. Uh, first of all, Traeger Tales, Noodles and Knowledge. Carl Traeger families had the opportunity to attend a recent family night entitled Noodles and Knowledge. The evening began with catered spaghetti dinner sponsored by the Olive Garden. From there, families visited a variety of stations that supported reading and writing. Stations included journal-making, uh, technology, recipe-making, family games, photo booth, obstacle course, and the unveiling of our SOAR grant project. Special thanks to the Olive Garden, Carl Traeger, PSC, and our parents and staff, and I think we should also say SOAR, um, for sponsoring this wonderful event in that evening. Students qualifying for WISC-A Academic All-State Honors. Seniors from Oshkosh, um, West Boys and Girls Swimming Team and Diving Team have listed to the right, uh, on the screen are qualified for the WISC-A Academic State Honors. WISC-A Academic Honors. Winners are seniors who have maintained a 3.5 or higher cumulative GPA. Uh, students, athletes must have had, also competed in swimming diving team for at least two years, earning a varsity letter during at least one season. This would be, uh, most of the seniors and who qualified during the season. Great job to those seniors and swimmers and divers. Bucks Band Play at the, at the game on February 20th. 150 Merrill and South Park Middle School students traveled to Milwaukee to play at the BMO Harris Bradley Center for a Milwaukee Bucks game. The students sat courtside while they played a 20-minute pre-game prep band performance. The students then enjoyed the rest of the game with families and friends. The combined band, uh, led by South Park Band Director Emily Bauer and Merrill Band Director Charles Bauer, um, were in leadership, and, um, it's really nice to have a couple together, working so well, uh, to assist all of our students. What a delight that is. On Saturday, uh, February 28th, OESD Middle and High School students competed in the Regional National History Day Contest in Madison, Wisconsin. Uh, the competition represented hundreds of hours of working inside and outside of the classroom as students prepare historical exhibits, performances, websites, and documentaries. The Wisconsin DPI recognized National History Day as one of the leading avenues to promote common core state standards, uh, in the social studies classroom. Thirty-five students will advance to the state contest on April 25th, and below there are detail of, uh, the students participating from each school. We had large numbers from, uh, North High School, West High School, Merrill Middle School, uh, Traeger Middle School, and Webster. So outstanding event. Jacob Shapiro, 4K students learn about science. Uh, each Jacob Shapiro, 4K student, brought a science experiment to share with their peers for the month of February. Sink or float, chemical reactions, uh, color mixing, and magnets, where several types of experiments performed. The students had fun making predictions, observations, and connections each day. I think I will stop with a special guest here. I'll just move on. South Park applies for Edward and Del Rowdy Grant to fund a learning and innovation cooperative. The idea behind this concept is to create a maker space for students to learn about the topic of interest. Students would be able to practice life and career skills by, uh, by problem-solving, coding, and exploring STEM. The South Park Learning and Innovation Cooperative, SPE-LIC, would be available to students in their classes and would create dual projects. Items in this grant would include iPads, laptop computers, and a 3D printer. Uh, wish us luck as we hear the funding for the initiative. South Park news, uh, has, is included in that experience. Oshkosh North High School students participate in the state wrestling tournament. Oshkosh North High School seniors Brandon Green and Colin Grunwald both qualified for the WIAA State Tournament last week in Madison. Brandon took sixth place, and Colin, uh, lost her first match 4-3 and was eliminated from the tournament. Congratulations for achieving that level of competition. Shapiro students learn about importance of clean water. Uh, thank you to Jessica Schultz and Kelly Ryer from the Fox Wolf Watershed Alliance. Uh, they visited with students at Jacob Shapiro to talk about the importance of keeping our surface water clean. Students learned from the stormwater flows directly into Lake Winnebago, uh, into the Fox River, and out to Green Bay and Lake Michigan. Students watched how pollution flows through the watershed and with, uh, surface water pollution model. Jessica and Kelly's visit helped students prepare their experiments on pollution and remember how to keep our freshwater resources clean. Congratulations to Oshkosh West High School Swim Team, Swimming and Diving Teams, the Oshkosh West Girls Swim Team. Varsity Letter winners had achieved the NISC-A National Intercollegiate, uh, Swimming Coaches Association of America Scholar Team Award. Twenty-three varsity letters with a combined GPA of 3.585 earned the Silver Level Award. The Oshkosh Boys West Team and, uh, and diving, swimming team and diving team, uh, achieved the NISC-A Scholar Team Award. Seventeen letters winners with a combined GPA of 3.565. Um, just a little bit under the goals, I note, with, uh, earning a Silver Letter. Students learn about Harriet Tubman. Oshkosh North, the Vocational Schools Program students visited the Grand Opera House to understand the courage, dedication, and survival against all odds mentality of Harriet Tubman through a play called The Freedom Train. And congratulations to Oshkosh West Senior, Kyle Kitchen, on signing a letter of intent to play softball next year at Vortu Bo University. And congratulations to Oshkosh West Junior, Teresa Richards, as she qualified for the WIAA State Gymnastics Meet this past Saturday in Wisconsin Rapids. Teresa qualified in the uneven bars vault and in the all-around event. Career Fair. Oshkosh, uh, annual Oshkosh Career Fair, Exploration Fair. More than 800 eighth-grade students from both Oshkosh-area public schools and Lord's Academy participated in the Career Fair held at Oshkosh West High School on March 5th. Oshkosh students partnered with the, uh, Chamber of Commerce to welcome over 85 career presenters from all 16 career clusters. The goal of the event was to provide students with an exposure to a wide range of occupations within our region, meet people who work in these occupations, and become aware of the companies that offer these opportunities. The event was made possible through the sponsorship of the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce, the Fox Valley Workforce Development Board, and the Oshkosh Area School District. Continental Breakfast was prepared by the Oshkosh West Culinary Classes for the presenters and volunteers, and sponsored by Lord's Academy and Starbucks. A special thank you goes to all who volunteered from UW-Oshkosh and Oshkosh West High School. Jefferson Elementary School had a Family Literacy Night. Jefferson students and families had the opportunity to learn how literacy and cooking go hand-in-hand with Amy Hanton from Fox 11's Living with Amy Cooking Show, uh, at the Family Literacy Night on March 3rd. Hanton engaged the Jefferson families with humor, audience participation, literacy integration, recipe, reading recipes, labels, and et cetera, and the importance of cooking up memories with children in the kitchen. Um, it appears that it was a great, great evening for all. Jefferson Elementary School and the UW-Oshkosh partnered, uh, for Read Across America Week. Over 60 UW-Oshkosh education students worked diligently through the, out the month of February to create, uh, art installations based on, on children's book characters to display, be displayed at Jefferson Elementary School during Read Across America Week. Uh, they include, of course, The Umbrella by Jan Brett and Rainbow Fish and Rainbow Fish and the Blue Whale by Marcus Easter. A thank you, a huge thank you to the Oshkosh North and West Assistant Principals, Lisa Huffman and Steve Harrison, for all the preparation, organization, and hard work to administer the ACT and the ACT work keys on March 3rd and 4th. Uh, great, uh, great job. These two assistant principals have simply done a fabulous job in making that, um, first-time event flawless. Child Development Days and Family Fair. The OSD Family Education Screening and Family Fair for children's 2 and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2 was a big success this year. Approximately 200 students were screened and visited the fair, all taking place at the Recreation Building, uh, here in Oshkosh. Webster Stanley Elementary News. Every month, Webster students focus in on new social skills. This month, the theme was bullying. Students learned how to make others feel good about themselves. Students work together to understand the negative aspects of bullying. Community donations for PBIS. During the past three years, the Oshkosh Area School District has implemented PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention, and supports in our schools. As you know, PBIS is a school-wide evidence-based framework that creates a safe school environment for students to learn the lifelong skills of respect, response, and responsibility, as well as develop necessary social skills to be successful learners, workers, and community members. Since, uh, since beginning, the PBIS framework at different school sites, positive behaviors have increased, resulting in increased learning time and academic achievement. We wanna especially thank, uh, the businesses who have already made donations to many of our schools. The PBIS committee will be sending out letters to local businesses requesting their assistance as partners with our district, and would appreciate any donations they can provide, including gift cards, coupons, monetary gifts. Thank you in advance to all those who help us continue the PBIS efforts. We also like to thank events for considering the Oshkosh Area School District and PBIS district-wide. STEM Night. Uh, please join us at South Park for STEM Night on Thursday, March 19th, uh, from 5:30 to 7:30. STEM, Family STEM Night at South Park Middle School will take place on Thursday, March 19th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. STEM Night Promotions, activities involving science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Uh, the STEM Program, South Park Middle School and the Oshkosh Area School District will have teamed up with UW-Oshkosh College of Education and Nursing. Uh, students and families are welcome to come for the fun of giant bubbles, mystery powder, spaghetti towers, silly putty, and much, much more. We hope that you have a chance to attend. This, um, event is, uh, repeats itself in each of our middle schools. Uh, with that, lastly, on the list of superintendent's engagements in the last two-week period, uh, across the, uh, the school district. With that, that completes my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mack. At that point, I guess I would like to go back to the Board President's Report for a moment and, uh, introduce our special guest this evening. Uh, last night, after the Mark Wood concert, I happened to catch Barb Herzog, uh, talking with, uh, our guest, Mark Wood. And Mark is in the audience tonight. Mark, if you would come forward.
Yeah. Hi, guys.
Hi, Mark.
I know you're really busy, and it's an honor for me to be here, so I state my name, right?
Um, but actually, if you'd just come over to the microphone, yep. Just go ahead. You can pick it up.
Mark Wood, uh...
No, no, I mean, uh, have a seat at the microphone.
Well, I sit here.
You have to sit.
Wow, this is cool.
This is a serious meeting.
I'll be great, but I appreciate it.
All right, and just state your name and address for the record.
And my home address, too? No, I can't, yeah. Uh, Mark Wood, New York City.
All right.
Uh, thank you guys so much. I won't take up your time. I think it's important that I share with you my experience. For those of you who do not know, I'm one of the founding members of the Trans-Siberian Orchestra, and I've toured and our dear friends with Billy Joel, Celine Dion, Paul McCartney, Kanye West, and I've worked with everybody in the business, and it's an honor for me to be in Oshkosh. Who knew I was gonna be here for the whole week? And I have a residency here that was set up by the music program, and I wanted to share very briefly with you my experiences with the last couple of days, which have been astounding. For those of you who also don't know, I, for eight months out of the year, I do music advocacy to all public school music education programs around the world, from Australia to Europe to America. And I do two to three a week for eight months out of the year. It's exhausting, but the advocacy is critically important because our arts and our music programs define humanity at the most beautiful level. And I wanna share the experience that I have with incredible teachers, incredible visionaries, incredible leaders. On Sunday night, we performed with my family, my son and my wife, or my singer and drummer of my band, and we performed with the Oshkosh Symphony. Seven hundred, uh, 750 people were there. Last night, we had a concert with the middle schoolers, over 1,000 people were there. I donated one of my instruments, by the way, I build electric violins, I'm a violin player. And, um, I donated one of my violins that I donated last night, and also on Friday night's concert, we generated over $3,000 for the music program. So it really was an honor for me, but I have to tell you how incredibly important it was for me to observe, 'cause that's what I like to do. I like to watch a community respond to the arts of the music programs. I think that when we're talking about STEM, we are adding the "A" to create steam. We need to be arts in that, um, phrase and that philosophy and that message, because the arts define America at its most beautiful, not only just artistically, and we know that we bring the arts into underprivileged areas, and they blossom economically. So the arts are critically important. Music is great. I'll give you a little story. Last night, um, this girl, Special Meets Girl, Izzy, um, she can't hold her hand like this to play violin show. Steve, the teacher, had her play the violin like this, which I've never seen before, and just so that she could be included in the orchestra program. And then sitting next to her was Josh, who was a high-level, incredibly smart kid, chiseled, a masterful cello player, and they both worked together beautifully, smiling and making music. And that's the great part about music programs. It brings people together, it encourages diversity, and everybody is a winner in music. That's all I wanted to say. And thank you guys for inviting me. I love Oshkosh.
All right, well...
Please thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you very, we thank you very much for last night's concert, and we look forward to Friday's.
Yes, I hope to see you guys around tonight. It's gonna be awesome.
Thank you for coming, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, other board reports.
That's a tough one to follow.
Education Committee, wah, wah, ready?
Okay, well, we talked about the exciting news that the Alps, um, school will be moving from Merrill over to Tippler. Um, we discussed all of the reasons why, and here are a few. Uh, as we all know, those Green Meadow kids, the 85, Green Meadow kids that are at Tippler now will, uh, be going back to their home school at Lakeside, so that's gonna open up some space at Tippler, and extra capacity is needed at Merrill to address the mental health issues that they have there. So that would open up Merrill for the new Encompass Behavioral Health Program. So it's a win-win. Uh, the beauty of, um, moving everybody over to Tippler is that now that the Lakeside or the Green Meadow kids are moving out, we're still gonna have the, um, staff efficiencies because we'll be moving in a whole nother set of students. And Alps classes would now, when they move over to Tippler, will operate under the middle school schedule, which makes a lot more sense, and it's easier as a principal and for everybody that's working there to operate on the same schedule. And since there's no busing, we don't have any busing issues with this population, so that's good news, too. Um, let's see. Uh, Wave Robotics and Lego League are both housed at Tippler, uh, so Alps kids can be involved in that, it'd be easier for them. It will also strengthen the Tippler Strings Program because the Alps kids are in the, they're strong strings players. And, let's see, Tippler's accelerated mass students who now go to South Park could possibly go and join Alps, so another win-win. And they are currently, uh, applying for CLC Grant for after-school care, but they're thinking that for some of the younger kids with the middle school schedule, that might not be a big deal. But anyways, they're looking into after-school care. Um, after we discussed that, Linda Piran brought us up to date on, um, the Encompass Programs, and right now, we only have four, and we need to expand that, and there's, there just hasn't been any space. So by opening up Merrill, we'll now be able to have space for the Encompass Program. These programs are self-contained, and they have their own schedules, that's why we need separate rooms for them. Um, and these programs help students to work themselves back into regular education program, which I think is key. Linda shared several cases, um, of the difference that our program has made in people's lives. They were very touching stories, very compelling. Um, there is a definite high need for alternative education at the middle school level. I think the aim is, instead of throwing kids in special ed, we actually work with these children to get them back into regular ed. That's the goal. So that's kind of, that's beautiful, I think. Um, the district recently sent two staff members to the youth mental health first-aid training. Uh, they are gonna be bringing that training back. It's an overview of mental health diagnoses, how to identify, and then how to react, um, in a helpful way to students. In the future, this training is gonna be opened up to other members, and I understand, I believe the police department is also working, um, is participating, and the city is sending about five to 10 people, um, and the county is sending at least five, so it's gonna be, um, you know, a big effort. And then Kim Brown and Linda Piran talked about Response to Intervention, RTI. Um, and again, we just talked a lot about, uh, the different strategies and how these kids used to be put in special ed, and now we're working these interventions into their co... to be put in special ed, and now we're working these interventions into their curriculum and helping those kids stay in regular ed. They said having literacy intervention teachers at the middle school has resulted in ten kids just this year alone being able to return to regular ed classrooms, which means that they're reading at grade level. So instead of putting them in special ed, we're getting them up to grade level and then throwing them back in the classroom, which is great. First time ever that this has occurred, and it's showing the results. Okay. We've been invited to speak with the staff at police departments about disabilities and how they should react, because we do have some, you know, crossover with our populations. And we're looking to get the police to come and interact with our kids on a positive level and to build those bridges and relationships, because there are kids out there that would run away from cops rather than running to them when they're in trouble. So we're going to try and help bridge that gap. Future plan is that we're going to talk about Alps tonight, the move tonight during our board meeting. There will be no, there's no resolution. We don't need one for this. It's going to happen. And then they are going to work through a communication plan on how they're going to let all the Alps staff know and the students and how we're going to move forward. Future agenda items include STEM updates from Webster Middle and Jacob Shapiro, and then a school counseling curriculum, pre-K through twelve, scope and sequence for the future. Next meeting, March 19th at 9:00 a.m. here at the district office.
All right. Thank you very much. Other board reports? Number one. All right. Seeing none, we will go on to the first workshop for this evening, Summer School Program Plan. Jacob's and Piran.
So today, we're going to talk about the summer school staff, or not staffing, but the programs that are set. For K-8, we have sixteen days following, no Friday, and we're going to run it the same as we have in the past, although this week, this year, we're not taking the week off of July 4th, because the fourth falls on a Saturday. So we will start June 22nd and go until July 16th, and the K-8 will be done at that point. High school will be run in two sessions. The first session starting June 15th and going until July 3rd, Monday through Friday, and then Session Two starting July 6th and being done July 24th. Unfortunately, EAA has moved up their week, so we will overlap EAA for the final week of summer school, but by then, hopefully, most of our kids will be good to go. Again, we're going to run elementary and middle schools at the same locations that we did last year to provide for the air conditioning and the ideal work environments for those kids. So elementary will be held at Jefferson, Oaklawn, and Traeger, and the middle school and the high school will both be at North. That worked out very well. There was a lot of positive feedback from parents having both at the high school last year. So the timelines, some of this has already occurred. We communicated and have sent out staff applications already. We started registration for all of four K through grades twelve online this year, which is new for the high school, because high school has never been online before. That started March 2nd, so we are about a week and a half into the registration. For K-8, we will end on April 2nd, so that we can take a look at classes, set those up for the staff, for the students, and then figure out all of our staffing needs at that point. High school will continue to accept applications through May 1st to allow for the credit recovery and things like that as the students, as we move ahead. Since we are going, we have a new system at the Infinite Campus, all of the non-OASD families can contact Terry Sell or myself, get an enrollment card, still get the parent portal, and they are able to sign up on the parent portal as well for their online classes. So that is working out well, too. As far as students who still need summer school after the registration date closes, it's not completely closed. If a principal or a teacher feels that their student needs to have summer school, they can contact Terry Sell or myself, and we can still enroll them, but only for those, not the enrichment classes, only for the literacy and the math classes, because we don't want to turn anyone away for those. We're hoping to have teaching assignments by mid-April and class confirmations for the parents by mid-April, mid-April to early May. It will all depend on how fast we can get those classes in. And then lead teachers will meet with their staffs, tentatively, the week of May 17th. This slide shows what our enrollment has been over the last few years, and then the last slide, or the last column there, shows what it is currently after a week and a half of registration. So as you can look, I think the last two columns are probably the most important when you look at this document. For most of these classes, we have almost half of our enrollment that we had for last year already after a week and a half of registration. So it's pretty phenomenal. The system, we've gotten great feedback from parents for registration. They say it's easy. They almost think it's too easy that they're wondering, am I missing a step? So, you know, like I said, the numbers are looking really good so far, and it's early. We still have two and a half columns left. Here, again, are numbers for the K-8. As you can see, last year, our special interest for the enrichment classes, last year was at eleven fifty-eight, which was up from the year before, and as already, a week and a half in, we have six hundred and eighty-seven kids signed up for the special interest classes. So we are seeing great numbers. Band and orchestra, we can't predict right now. They're still doing registration for the band, orchestra, and choir camps, all via paper, because we didn't know how to do that this year. So hopefully, next year, we can do those all online as well. High school is doing their marching band online, though, so we're going to kind of take their lead for next year. These are the high school totals. As you can see, we're about halfway there for the enrichment high school classes. The high school credit recovery, we have to work with the counselors for those students that may need that class. So for the total, last year, we had three thousand seven hundred and eighty-three kids that had taken classes and signed up for courses for summer school. And then this is our projected numbers for the financial impact. The average, because summer school falls over two fiscal years, we have to average it for actually three years and then make a projection. So these are all projected numbers. The current average student FTE is one thirty-eight. Actually, I think it's higher than that, but since we have to average it, it looks a little bit down. But for a while there, we were on a downward slope for our equalization aid from the state, but this year, it's projected to be higher. So that's a good thing for Oshkosh schools. So we're looking at a gain of quite a bit of money. That's it for us. Do you have any questions? Yes?
I do. First of all, I want to compliment you on the quality of your report. And my question has to do with your major points, one of your major points. F, in which you stated, "Most English language learner students are integrated into the general pre-K-12 course offering. Support will be provided to the students by ELL teachers." Could you define what that support might look like, please?
Sure. We have ELL teachers that are hired at each of the buildings, so they can go into the classroom. For those students that are actually signed up for those classes, like literacy or math, the teacher can go in and support them during that math period, depending on their need and their level. I work with the ELL teachers to identify who those kids are that might need that support and are signed up for summer school, and then we have them target those specific kids. And we offer that support at each of the levels, including high school. We also, this year, will continue the Language Immersion Program, which we started a couple of years ago, for the newcomer families and the refugee families, and those are taught, giving, the younger grades, like K-six, I believe it is, get very integrated, hands-on experiences. They practice, you know, learning the vocabulary, just for the general vocabulary. They learn academic vocabulary. They work on some math and literacy skills as well. High school is going to take a more academic focus this year, and they're going to be housed at the high school. Justin Heel is the teacher for that class, and he'll be working at the high school for those seventh, like seventh grade through high school kids that are newcomers. So those are students, we have a criteria that I worked with Julie Mosher on to establish for those kids. So they have a little bit different experience than the regular kids that are integrated within the classroom.
Okay. Did we hire any ESL paraprofessionals for summer school?
Yep. We have a paraprofessional in each of the Language Immersion classes, but at the high school, we just have the ELL teachers. I mean, for the integrated kids, we just have the ELL teachers.
Thank you.
I have a question more of curiosity than anything else, and you may or may not know the answer to this. When you showed twelve to thirteen, thirteen to fourteen, the numbers were dropping in almost every category. Do we know why?
For financial piece or for the enrollment?
No, for enrollment numbers. Do we know why we are seeing drops?
Actually, special interest is growing.
Special interest is growing, yes.
Yeah, big time.
It depends on the class. The stepping up to sixth grade, we found that we weren't having as many kids, but now it's looking like we have almost what we had last year. So there's potential for growth there as well. I can say that, starting in 2014, we made the switch to all air-conditioned buildings. Prior to that, we had summer school in buildings that were not air-conditioned, and I think we had a few hot summers in there as well, and I think some families decided not to put their kids in summer school for that reason. I think that having them in air-conditioned buildings is a little bit of a bonus for families, and they're looking at it again as a plus.
I give you another answer to that, too, Mr. Beinoff. I think what's happening also, what I'm seeing, is the enrichment has taken off as well. Our strength training is one of those areas, and marching band, our numbers there have grown tremendous. Our enrichment classes, E-Academy, last year, we offered E-Academy classes, and we offered six of them last year. Only two actually went. This year, now, we're offering six again, and our numbers, all of a sudden, are starting to pick up. But what's also happening is, summer school in the past traditionally was known as a time to make up what you failed if you went back years ago. And that's what I remember when I first got into education, is that was the time you made up classes. And that's what summer school was offered for, and that's what it was there for. Well, we don't have those failures anymore, because there's so many programs in place now during the school year, that we're getting very, very few failures that we used to have like five, six years ago. I have very, very few kids taking classes for credit recovery that we used to have now, that we're just, they're just not there. So it's pretty much just all enrichment courses that we're providing at this point.
Because we saw more kids total. She totals them up. We actually, other than 2012, we had a boon year. They're all...
I mean, if you look at these, from twelve down to thirteen, fourteen, you know, one ninety-six, one sixty-four, eighteen, one forty-two, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, two thirty-five, one fifty, one thirty-nine, they're all sort of dropped off.
Like what he's saying is, we're catching kids before they need to.
Yeah. During the school year now, there's so many different programs that are in place now, that they're offering, when they're taking care of these kids for current recovery, before they even go out the door, before June 15th, which is really great. So I think our school system's doing a super job.
If you look at this number, from just the special interest classes, it jumped in 2012 from eight forty-three to eight fifty-nine to eleven fifty-eight, and we already have six hundred and eighty-seven signed up this year so far, after not even eight days.
I'll give you one specific, last, in the past, I used to have an English I, English II, and English III teacher for those three programs. Last year, I didn't have a teacher for any of those programs. So we saved three teachers right off the bat, right there. Didn't have to have a staff member at all, because we didn't have the need for. So we're addressing those needs already. So that's a good, a good thing, I guess.
And one thing that we are offering that's different this year in regards to the busing situation, we are trying to target some of those kids that might really need some of those remedial types of classes, like the literacy and the math, but live in a hard-to-get-at location where they can't get to a school to get the bus to come to summer school. So like, we have offered this year, a pickup site at the Logan Drive area. We offered one for the trailer park off of Forty-One. We offered one, another one for the trailer park off of County Road Eight, so that those kids that might need the services can actually get to it. So we are offering that. We offered another pickup at Father Cars as well. So another thing that's been beneficial, too, is we're offering free breakfast and free lunch for Jefferson, North, Oaklawn, and then at Traeger. Unfortunately, they don't meet the requirements for the free program, but they can still have lunch at Traeger after school.
All right. Any other questions?
That triggered a question for me. So if a child is attending Carl Traeger, and they normally would qualify for a free and reduced lunch during the academic...
They still get free and reduced during summer.
They will get free and reduced lunch. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Update on implementation of the Infinite Campus. Dr. Gunlock.
I have a feeling I plan to re-go through the same one that you went through last year.
No, no, unless you'd like me to.
No, no. I was not actually, you weren't going to try.
It was really good. You might like it again. But, no, we're just, one of the things we want to do is give you an update regarding our Infinite Campus implementation and some of the changes, and we have a variety of people here that we're going to, who have some information from more of the users' perspective than, you know, my perspective, per se. Starting off, though, this is a pretty big change when you go to a new student information system. I have survived four student information system rollouts, and they've all kind of gone in a very similar fashion. They start out, you know, where there's a lot of changes and adjustments to processes, and you always come out better in the end, but there's always sort of that implementation dip. And, you know, thankfully, we're through the lion's share of that at this point, which is really good. But one of the things we wanted to talk about a little bit was, why did we make this change? You know, and I just want to recall that around 1112, we had a presentation put on by the Curriculum and Assessment Group, and they brought up a variety of principles, and they were all talking about how they deal with assessment information. And there was a lot of real quaint ideas around how we did this. Some teachers were doing it via spreadsheet, some were doing it via paper sheet, some were doing it in Google Docs, some were doing it all over the place, and we really didn't have any of that connected. And at that time, the board, I think it was Board Member Carl Lowenstein at the time, turned to me, and he called me, I wasn't in my workshop, called me up after the workshop and said, what are we going to do to fix this? And this was sort of the data needs at that time. You know, we needed some improved data gathering. That was very key. A lot of the data we had was not necessarily accurate. It would be conflicting with other data, depending on how you'd pull it, and that's, of course, a problem. We needed to link HR data to financial data. One of the things, when Stan arrived for the district, we talked a lot about position control. In my previous district and in his previous districts, you had that much tighter, where you had position control, as people were hired, the data just tended to flow, but a lot of our systems were not tied together really tightly yet. A flexible and easy-to-use data warehouse. We were storing all of this stuff in a variety of spreadsheets, and none of it was connected. So any teacher the next year who inherited the students had no idea, unless they were really good friends with the previous teacher and were able to get that Excel file. So that was, that was not appropriate either, so we wanted to fix that. Create an integrated OASD dashboard, very similar to what we do with the strategic plan, so the community can, in a very transparent way, see what we have as far as performance. And not just regarding student achievement. There's a whole variety of metrics and information that we can provide. Professional development to leverage the new capabilities, reduce costs, and increase efficiency. One of the things that you heard of during the summer school presentation was the online registration piece. We had not had that before. So that increase in efficiency is now really starting to take hold, which is a positive. And then customized application development to support innovative ideas and practices. Those are the questions we have yet to ask and answer. But basically, if there's an idea out there on how we want to do this, we want to have the functionality to be able to proceed. So that was 2012. The strategic plan included this under Goal 2B, which is develop and deliver a database quarterly feedback system. Well, we need the data in order to be able to do that, so we had some key action steps that we wanted to go through. We restructured the IT department and obtained approval for a database developer position. As we stated, our fellow districts around the state, especially those our size, often had multiple people in these positions, and we had not yet had any. So there really wasn't anybody leading that connection effort. That has been complete. Meet with the respective departments to determine the elements needed. That is an ongoing thing. We are always doing that, and will continue to do that. Change processes based upon the practice standards. That is an ongoing... That is an ongoing piece, and that is the hard part, because the policy and procedure changes, because what you're doing is you're changing, we're sort of doing process consulting with our own district. And we're saying, these are the processes we had in place, this is a more efficient process, this is how we link these pieces together to reduce the overall time in the end. Create linkages between and among our databases. As you'll see in a minute, we have a lot of buckets of information. Those buckets not always, did they talk? Staff would have to change information in multiple spots. It was very disconnected, and we still are to a certain degree, but we're much more connected than we used to be. Creating and purchasing a data warehouse. We are not going to proceed with that step quite yet, and you'll see why in a moment. We need to get all of our data loaded into Infinite Campus from an assessment perspective, and then use their data analytics tools to the extent we can, and then we'll know, okay, we need these types of dashboards built. At that point, we'll proceed in purchasing a data warehouse. The advantage we have is while we're waiting, other districts right now are working with the Department of Public Instruction, and there's a data dashboard system called Wise-Local, which is in its, I would say, I would say it's a good, solid beta right now. Green Bay, Kettle Moraine, and a handful of other districts are using it. When we're ready, it's going to be ready, and it's not going to be beta anymore, it's going to be a real top-flight product, so. Implement a new student information system and tie it into the data warehouse, obviously that's something that will be in process. So this just gives you an idea. We have a lot of main containers. You know, we have Skyward that we use for human resources. We have Skyward that we use for finance and budgeting. We have Microsoft SCCM, which, if you want to know what that means, let me know, and we'll talk about it. Active Directory, same thing, that's where all the People's Directory accounts exist. But there's one sort of central point of truth, and that at this point is Infinite Campus. And that means, that is the piece that feeds all those other data resources. So if there's one piece of information that's accurate, it's going to be that piece. Because we also have a whole series, you can see in the light blue, of data containers that are outside Oshkosh. All our Google Apps information is not here. It's out in the cloud, in servers at Google. Scholastic reading inventory, our TeachScape, Postini for email archiving, all of that is outside. We then have a whole series of bright blue buckets that are inside. So what we've done is, we've tied together Infinite Campus, all of these pieces, and they all are now starting to talk and flow. And we are one district of many that is doing this. The new hot-button issue for school districts, and our stake right now, is what's called identity management. Having one point of identity management, just like we did with students. There was a time when students did not have a student ID number, so there was no way to trace them as they went from district to district to district. Now every student has what's called a WSN, and if a student moves from Manasha to Oshkosh to Fondlech to Nina, their test scores and all their data and all the information about them tracks. We have nothing like that for staff. So what the state is doing, is creating something called Wise ID that will serve that purpose. For us, we have a similar need internally. Infinite Campus fits that need for us, in addition to the other pieces. So that is sort of a background of where we were, why we had to pick some sort of central point of truth, and why it made sense to make it our student information system. Because if we're going to get one thing accurate, that has to be the piece that's accurate.
All right, so we're going to talk a little bit, we're going to back up to December of 2013, where the learning team and the data team came together and really started discussing, how are we going to make all of this happen? And we started with getting a core team. It was representatives from a variety of grade levels, different roles in the district, all coming together to start, first of all, getting an overview of Infinite Campus, and then, of course, also to start discussing processes. Because this was a great opportunity to make sure that we were rolling out the same processes across all the schools, which wasn't always done in the past. And we started out, you can see, in March, April, and May, it was specific users that were starting to have discussions. Again, it was mostly about processes at this time, to really make sure that we were doing things the right way. And then in June, July, and August, we started moving into more specific trainings for teacher leaders as well. So we had a group of teacher leaders, some of them are here tonight, who were trained in Infinite Campus for a couple days, and then they came back that first four days in August to do some training. Our clericals were the first group who went through a three-day intensive training, because, of course, they were the first to be on the front line to know and understand the system. And then from there, in September, we've just had continued support, and our data team has been critical in that. Our instructional support teachers, our technology integration coaches, our teacher leaders who were involved in the very beginning, they have been on the spot. Any questions that people have had, they have been the main problem solvers, along with Julie Mosher. So we're very fortunate for all of those people to be there to figure things out and to move things smoothly forward. And then we also have webinars and campus tools available, so we'll just talk a little bit about those. First one is the campus community. And you'll see right here, that's a way that people can go in, they go into the knowledge base, they can type in anything that they are looking for. So in the beginning, if they said, "Now, how did we do attendance?", they could go here, and they could very quickly come up with different simulations, different videos, different discussions. And then if they said, "Wow, I really need this, and I want this right next to my computer", there is also a download for a PDF of the step-by-step directions. So that was one of the tools that we could use. And then they could also go to Infinite Campus University, and those are very detailed courses that are tied back to all aspects of Infinite Campus. We have, every Oshkosh area school district staff member is able to utilize the campus community. And again, they can be in person, they can be self-paced, or they can be through a webinar. It looks like that.
And there's 186 courses currently available today, if anybody wants to take those.
And our clerical staff, and our principals, and our data team have really taken advantage of those, and I think some teachers, but I think it's really those groups who are really leading through some of those things, so.
So, student learning and assessment. It was, I'm going to be honest, it was a little bumpy start at the beginning of the school year this year. Because when you do a software conversion, we knew we needed to do this, we knew we needed to adjust our student information and get our data clean and do all these things. But our primary users are our teachers, and then we also introduced this out to our community through Parent Portal. So when we went through this software conversion, we went through this for 850 licensed staff members, as well as, you know, about 1,000 other staff members that may be using it in some aspect, along with our 10,000 students who all have Infinite Campus Portal accounts, along with all of our families. And so Dave and I will talk more about the Parent Portal and the access to that. So it wasn't, it wasn't just our data teams and our behind-the-scenes and our office that had to go through this and had a different user experience, it was our educators. And you know, as an educator or teacher, you're interacting with a gradebook or student information every single day. So as you can see, we did a lot of prep and planning, but once again, we need to go through a software conversion. All the prep and planning in the world, you can plan, 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 but there's going to be some things that come up and that we're going to have to tackle. So as a teacher, we have a teacher, the teacher interface is Campus Instruction, which is really your gradebook, where all the things, grading happens with lessons. And we actually started out the beginning of the year, we were still in the beta version. Now we're in the full, we're in the full version, in "beta" in quotes, because we'll talk a little bit about that. And also, another interface is Campus Tools. As a school counselor, a pupil service person, an office person, administrator, you live in Campus Tools quite often, but once again, as a teacher, you're in Campus Instruction with the gradebook. And actually, we have three teachers that I'll introduce to you in a few moments, that I'll talk a little bit more about, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school experiences as a teacher within that gradebook. So once again, we had to get everybody trained up with a whole lot of help at the beginning of the school year, and once again, it was a little bumpy, but we got those things worked out. One thing you'll know is that we didn't turn on the Parent Portal until October 6, at the beginning of the school year, because we really wanted our educators and our teachers to feel as comfortable as, as comfortable as they could with a new information system and putting their gradebook out before we started. Because sometimes when you're starting to learn something, you're going to make mistakes, and we know as teachers, we want to be as accurate as possible, so we got that turned on on October 6. But it took us a while to get us all up to speed. Also, because it was the beta version, there was definitely some bugs in the system. And one area was, one area that's really great, and that's working well for us now, is Infinite Campus Messenger. But at the beginning of the year, there was definitely some bugs in there, especially from the teacher area pushing out to like families and students. In addition, within the gradebook, we had bugs. And so, and because we hadn't used it before, we were getting error messages, and there was a whole lot of critical thinking and problem solving going as we were, as we were working through this. And then also, different reports, trying to figure out, well, we used to, we used to find out the information this way, now how are we going to find out information this way? So as a teacher, I had to switch my thinking around, is how am I going to view my student grades? I used to do it this way, now how do I find this information? So there was, there was quite a learning curve of a new system, and our staff have been just absolutely wonderful. And so they've been patient, we've been trying to support them, but we have some good things, but we have some challenges that we're still working through with it. And once again, every time that I talk to anybody or out in the community about, "How's this going?", it seemed a little bumpy at the beginning, and I said, "Just remember, as a business, have you ever gone through a software conversion?" "Oh, yeah, we've been through a software conversion." I said, "Well, just imagine doing that as a school system with 10,000 students and over 800 teachers." And they're like, "Oh, yeah." And we've been in the same system, the legacy system, prior to this, for, we were in there for 15 years, 10 years?
Oh, 10 to 15 years.
10 to 15, I mean, it's been quite a while, so we have quite a learning curve.
And the one thing we heard from a lot of people was, the same bumps we were going through now were similar bumps when we went to Skyward the first time as well, but it was very much a similar situation, going from Penn Nation to Skyward. You know, there were a lot of similar hurdles to overcome.
So, to help us explain the teacher experience in Infinite Campus, I'm going to introduce three teachers, if they will come up and join me. First, with the elementary perspective, I have Erin Sagan from third grade at Oakwood Elementary. And then, where's Jen? Jen Melgren is a world language teacher at Tipler Middle School, and Doris Bailey, who is a math teacher at West High School. And they're going to tell you about their experience as teachers and representing their colleagues when it comes to Infinite Campus. And we'll kick it off with elementary with Erin.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Again, this is a kind of a culmination of things that my peers that I teach with wanted to let you all know about it. As a classroom teacher, we had, in the elementary, we worked with WebGrader, and we also had to work with Skyward. So one of the main points that we have enjoyed is the fact that the classroom teacher has everything in one spot, including even a picture of the child, contact information, all of that, and it's very, it's so user-friendly when you have to go in and find information about the student. We have the ability to enter attendance and our lunch count and scores for an assignment in one place, and our attendance has also been streamlined into our report card, which before was not at the elementary level. Another really nice feature is we have a like, a spark line, they call it, and this feature allows us to see a student's progress within each of the benchmarks. So we can see, almost like a little small data graph, how the child is progressing. If there's a dip in their progress in a standard, we can see it right there. It's a much easier system to override scores during the scoring window for report cards. We do not have to worry about having to protect our scores and on and off, and change a score, and did we protect it? I don't know. It's all set for us. The whole scoring window is now totally up to the classroom teacher. Before, we had to wait for the super user to generate grades for us, and then we went into WebGrader, we had to save it, and now we have in-progress grading, and it's always up-to-the-moment grading on that, so we really like that. We would also have to wait for a PDF to be sent to us by the super user, or the super user had to print out a copy of a report card for us, before we could view the whole overall report card. Now it's very easy just to click on and see the report card right in front of us, to see what the overall whole student looks like in all of the classes, even from the fact of looking at what they're doing in their specialist classes. At the elementary level, we must write a narrative for our students on the report card, especially in the literacy, mathematics, and life and learning skills. Writing comments is now less accessible, as we can view the comment box immediately and make changes to the errors right away, without having to wait for that PDF or the hard copy to come back to us. And viewing the window of the report is much easier online now, because before it was like this big, you could hardly even read it, even with my cheaters on. And then, just a small little thing, like even with creating a seating chart for your classroom, the program sticks their picture in, so when you have a substitute teacher come in, and they can see who, what face goes for what name, just little things like that, it's just been fabulous. Areas that I would have to say would be areas of growth at the elementary level, that we would like to see a little bit more growth?
That's a nice way to put it.
Oh, we like that. We kind of have too many clicks to score and save. When you're setting up assignments, many items could be defaulted, such as a summative, we would go to summative, and then if you wanted to change it to an informative assessment, we'd rather have it on the summative, be it, you know, defaulted to that, or a rubric versus percentage, or total points per standard. And then we must individually close out all the screens of the window. And I mean, it's great, it's nicer than putting pencil to paper, but I mean, just that waiting time when it's buffering is kind of a little bit of a frustrating moment. The limited amount of characters in the written standards themselves, which leads to some confusion in the selection of a standard, when you have, especially in literacy and mathematics, where some of the standards do start out the same way, and you only have, I don't know, so many characters.
75 characters.
So, you know, you almost, you really have to put to memory some of them, because they, some of them start out the same way, and you have to select the right one. So that is a little confusing. When you select more than four standards, the screen becomes somewhat cumbersome as you maneuver down your class list. You can't always see the written standard at the top, as you move down to the eighth or the ninth or the 10th student. Or if you have multiple standards, you can't see the child's name over on the side. So that's a little cumbersome, but we know that that's an area of growth for us. And what I could say is, we have really enjoyed this. It seemed a little daunting, and as elementary teachers, we, you know, it's a little nerve-wracking at the beginning of the year, but I liken it to getting a new car. We learned to turn it on this year, and we learned to drive it, but now we want to take a little bit of time to appreciate the little bells and whistles in it, and we haven't had the time to do that yet, but we're really excited to do that with the offering that you can go right online and look at all those little helpful hints. But we haven't been able to do that so far, but we enjoy it.
Great, thank you. Jen Melgren, I'm a middle school teacher at Tipler. And a lot of the things, we'll piggyback, it'll be similar, but one of the things that we really like is that messenger feature, to be able to send out messages to our families, upcoming events, et cetera. We like the app feature that the parents have, and a lot of the parents are interacting with the app, so that as scores go in right away, parents know, and the kids, because most of them have cell phones, they too have the app on their phone, so they're getting that instant feedback, which is really definitely a big positive. We also like that there's so many features available. I didn't know it was called a spark line, but we really like that spark, the spark line that shows the progress, and you can quickly see if a student's taking a dip and try to address that right away, because, you know, we work with a lot of students, over 100 students. So to be able to quick look at a screen and see, "Oh, I really need to double-check and see what's going on with an individual student", it gives a really fast cue for that. It's really nice for student groupings, there's a neat way of just being able to group your students through it, the seating charts, the spreadsheets that it offers, those are definitely positives. Our secretary said that one of the things that she really thought went really well is scheduling, being able to do those schedules. It's really easy for families to schedule, and that was just, that was really definitely something that went very well this year. As far, yeah, oh, I know, another one of the things that we do in our school is the PBIS, and when there's a letter that needs to go home to parents, it can go right through... And when there's a letter that needs to go home to parents, it can go right through all of that disciplinary thing, it's all housed in Infinite Campus. So the letters and that type of information goes home directly. So that is kind of a nice feature to Infinite Campus, it's a nice direct line. And when you asked me to do this, I kind of went through and tried to talk to everyone at our school, just to kind of make sure it wasn't just my perspective. So I kind of went through a bunch of different perspectives, teachers, students, I talked to secretary or dean to try to pass along from, so I'll go first with student perspective on it. They love the app. Some of the things that they would like to see for a change, they're having a hard time finding if they're having a missing assignment. If it dings on the app, they have, I think, a couple of days where it stays current, or even after they open it, and once they click off of it, they no longer see that missing assignment. And they're having a hard time if they want to see, oh, do I have a missing assignment in Spanish? They're having a hard time just clicking on Spanish and finding that missing assignment. So when they want to take ownership of making that up, it's more challenging for them. Also, their scores for an assignment, just what their actual percent is, what their letter grade is in an assignment, because we switched to benchmark, they can see all sorts of different benchmarks, but they can't see what they got in an actual test score. So if they're waiting, after they took a test, they're waiting to find out if they got, because they think in As, Bs, they still do instead of the five benchmarks that I was measuring, they can't find what their total score was. And lots of times, they're going in at night to try to look that up, and they're eager to find out, and they can't find that feedback. So, another thing they mentioned is they want to really see a GPA to see where they're standing, which I guess, I didn't even know it wasn't offered on there, but they're struggling with that. And then, I think, one of the biggest concerns, when I kind of polled 58th graders, of those 58th graders, seven have yet to see their grades. So I think they haven't seen their grades all, they haven't been on Infinite Campus, they don't know what they got at semester grades. And for me, as a teacher, that's kind of disheartening, because that's what we're working with them. So, and they kind of know in class, you know, we're giving them feedback every day in class, but kind of to see that end result, where they're at, I think can, would be something for improvement. From the secretary's perspective, the fees she thought was at the beginning of the year for clerical perspective, the fees were challenging at the beginning of the year. But most everything else, she thought, they thought were, like the scheduling, there's a lot of communication that can happen with Infinite Campus on their end to a little bit of that clicking and waiting and lots of clicks to get some information. From dean's perspective, the PBIS, it's really nice to house all of the data and collect data, and we just got to see some pies and graphs and really need, maybe they were Sparklines, really need information about how our students are doing behaviorally. And that was all generated through Infinite Campus reports, and it was done fairly easily. So it's a nice way to track how students are doing academically and with their behaviors. On the teacher perspective, a lot of it was very similar, just the clicking, multiple clicking, so putting in late assignments can go through five or six clicks. To be able to do that, it can take, one late assignment can take, you know, a minute to put in, and you get a lot of them in a day, because you're trying to, you know, kids always have that opportunity to make that up. And also, the freezing of the names across when we have the multiple standards, not being able to, you're grading, and all of a sudden their name is gone, so then you have, it's hard to find on those multiple standards who it is you're giving them to. And you just don't want to make any sort of clerical mistakes on it. It doesn't have that auto-sum, that was a concern from teachers, so you're hoping that you don't make a clerical mistake, and we try really hard to make sure we don't. But it would be nice to have something, double-checking that when we're entering in so much data. Seeing students' grades easily, the kids want to be able to do that, but we always, in the middle school, we always did homeroom grade checks, where we could bring each individual, we try to connect in that homeroom atmosphere with individual students, so they have a teacher that they're still connected to. And we would conference with them at our school twice bi-weekly with each student, and kind of tell them, okay, here's where you're at, here's which assignments are missing, let's make it a goal by Friday to get those in, here's, I'd like to, it would be great if you could make this improvement. And then we check back with the students, but it takes too long on Infinite Campus, and it's hard to find that information, to call up your 15 students, and we get about 15 minutes. And it's not up-to-date current for us to see, we can only do that close to our progress report time. So it would really be nice to be able to have that connection with the students, to help them to get that feedback right away. If students transfer classes, their grades are getting lost, and they're not transferring with the students.
I think the rest that I have would be similar to what you had mentioned on your list. So, there's definitely some great things, and then there's some things that I think it would help with communication with students and families and teachers to tweak, I guess. Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to probably be very repetitive, being the third person on this. So I also walked around the high school trying to find other perspectives, just to make sure that it wasn't just from my own perspective. And I talked to several teachers from different departments and asked for positives, which were hard to come by, I will tell you, at the high school. But the positives mainly were about things that weren't the grading system, because people at the high school are very frustrated with the amount of time it's taking us to put grades into the system and get them accurately entered, and some of those things. So I'm going to go through the positives first. Sending messages, the Messenger, teachers do really like that. We can send messages to families, to students, individual parents, and that seems to be pretty straightforward and easy to use. The color coding of the grades and assignments is great, we can see immediately if a child is failing, or they failed a specific assignment, because we can, they're color-coded for us. The seating charts and attendance are working really well, the teachers do like that very well. The parent text, I'm a parent, and I do get texts when my son's grades change, I love that. So I know other parents have the ability to get that, I don't know how many actually do, because in the beginning, they were bombarded by texts. So I think a lot of people did turn that off, but that feature is really nice to see. It sends out too many sometimes, because you get individual standards, texts as well as the final text, so there could be an overwhelming amount. I think a lot of people turned it off because of that, but that is a nice feature. Entering discipline referrals is fairly straightforward, it's, you know, you can enter a discipline referrals for students you don't really know, as long as you know their name, you can go in there and enter that, and that's fairly straightforward. But again, those are all outside of the gradebook. So some of the concerns and frustrations for myself and other teachers around the building, mainly centered around the time we spent entering grades, because it's very, very time-consuming when things scroll off, and you have to scroll back, and we have five or six standards to a test or an assignment, and we have to click three or four times to enter two different grades. So it's a lot of clicking, a lot of clicking, a lot of click your mouse, and you see a little spinning wheel for, you can sometimes count to 10, 20, before it goes away, and then continue on. So the time is very frustrating, because we feel that it's time taken away from spending with our students, or planning for those kind of things. And it's, it seems kind of trivial, but when you add it all up for all those students over a day, it's a lot of extra time. There's some little Dropbox, some features of Infinite Campus that we never use, that we would really like to see gone away, that would save us a lot of time. Entering late work, as was mentioned earlier, takes a lot of extra time, just to go in and enter one student's extra or late assignment, can take up to a minute or two just to get that one assignment entered. We believe that there's a decreased use by parents and students, because it is very frustrating for them to figure out what their actual grades are. So as parents came in for conferences, a lot of times, they didn't even know what their child's grade was, or if I email a student that their child is doing poorly, oh, I thought they're, you know, they told me they were at a B, and they really aren't, because they're not, nobody's looking anymore. Or not nobody, but very, some of the students have stopped, some of the parents have stopped looking at their grades. Some of the other things, let's see. Not being able to see a student's daily attendance while taking attendance, that would be very helpful for us. We used to be able to see, were they absent for a second and third hour, or are they suddenly just skipping our class? So we used to be able to see that, and now we cannot easily see that. Seeing a student's schedule, one of the other teachers said they would like to be able to see a student's schedule easier, so we know where they are in the following class or the class before, without actually, we have to leave the gradebook, go to another place, search for the student, and look for that, so that's a little difficult. So the reporting, it's unclear if students or parents are really accessing or understanding the information, even when we send out the progress reports. We get a message saying it's there, but we don't know if the parents or teachers are really, or students are really looking at it. The posting of grades at the end of the term seems to go pretty well, but again, multiple clicks, time spent, and then we have to recover, go back to our grading, so it's a lot of page maneuvering. And one thing that we used to be able to do is, if we changed grades after we posted them, we used to be able to know that they changed. Now we can't really tell if they were changed or not. So if we enter late work, we can't really tell if the grade we posted is the same as a new grade or not, so that's kind of a little technicality. So, basic summary at the high school, it's frustrating the time we spent, that's our biggest frustration. The system itself, lots of extra things that we would like to explore, but we haven't had a chance to really get into them. And we think there's a few minor things that if they could improve those, would make a huge difference in just everyone's, I think, opinion of the system.
Can I ask a question? Did anybody send, or are you guys planning on sending surveys out to parents and students? It's just something that came up, because people come to me, because they know I'm on the board, and they've said the same things that you were talking about, I just want to see their score. Or if I say, you know, how come you got an F on this one assignment? And you tell the child, you know, when you look at it, it tells you the benchmark. And the child goes, you know, is it the test from last Wednesday? I don't know what that benchmark means, I don't know what test relates to this box here, so.
I did that exact thing with my daughter.
Well, we've all had moments where, you know, you have an F, and we brought our kids in, ready to, you know, throw down the hammer, and the kids are like, whoa, slow down. You know, either they didn't mark it right, or it was turned in late and hasn't been marked yet. And I know a lot of parents that have come and been like, I can't believe my kid's failing. So, I don't know, I know that.
Yeah, I did want to add one more thing about the adding, too, that is a big inaccuracy issue with entering multiple, multiple grades, and it doesn't sum them up for us. So not, we're adding, you know, five or six numbers, or we're entering them, and then we also have to add them up. It used to be a kind of a double-check for RMAF, to make sure it was right. Or sometimes, it doesn't have an error check, so you could enter, I could enter an invalid score, and it doesn't catch it. So I could enter a 600 for a six, so a kid could have, you know, a student could have a 6,000 percent, and unless I see it, it won't, it won't show it. So there are some of those error-checking things that need to be addressed as well.
So are you guys planning on doing a survey? I don't know, I'm just asking, anyone?
When we get to the parent portal part, and we talk about like usage and such, that's one thing, especially towards the end of the year, that we want to look at.
Sure.
The other thing, as we go into this, is some of the stuff that we're having issues with has to do with like our setup, and saying, like currently, we're on quarters, like there's a Term 1, a Term 2, a Term 3, and a Term 4, and we really just need to be Semester 1 and Semester 2. And so there's some things that, when we took our setup from our legacy system and put it into Infinite Campus, it's not jiving the way it should. And so we're having some of those pieces. So, we're going to talk about this, but coming up, we're going to have some meetings as far as lifting the lid and saying, what are things that we need to improve? And so once we know what some of those things are, I want to also be able to ask parents, like, would you like it A, or would you like it, would you like option 1, or would you like option 2? But until we know some more things of like what we can lift the lid and make changes to, then we can do that. Erin had a great analogy about, we got the new car, we got it started, and now we're driving it. My analogy is that we put together like a new car, like we went, sat down, and we looked at all the features of a gradebook and a grading piece for a teacher, and they said, pick, let's look at all your features and try to match it up with what you're doing. And do you want this? Do you want this? Sure, yes. And you start putting all these pieces together, not knowing what the car is going to look like, because it's brand-new off the production line, thus the beta. And so, you know, as you started to piece that together, now that we know what we have, now we're going, oh, actually, it should look this way. And so we're already in the process of setting things up for next school year, so that it'll look very different. So like when a parent, the standards, just by going Semester 1 and Semester 2, you're not going to have these laundry lists of standards.
And starting at the beginning of the year, rather than having the latest at the top, drives me crazy. You have to scroll.
So there's things that we're, there's some things that we can do upon setup, that's going to make it less confusing for parents and easier for teachers. But there's some things that we're going to talk about later in the, moving on here, that we've said to Infinite Campus, we really need you to change these features, because it is taking time away from teachers in the classroom, and there's no reason for click, save, save, click, click, close. I mean, we can definitely make some improvements that way, so, okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, but thank you, thank you guys for doing that.
Thanks.
The next thing we wanted to do is look at a little bit from the getting away from the gradebook piece of it, more so looking at the data from sort of a systems lens. And I've asked Craig Schlevey, who's our database developer for the school district, and Kathy Roethy, who's our SIS manager, to come up and let you know from their perspective how things are connecting differently, so.
So, one of the really big things that we prioritized at the beginning of the year was connecting all of our student systems together. And so now, when Kathy creates a student in Infinite Campus and gives them an enrollment, they're automatically created in our system to have a computer login, they're able to get into their Destiny system, they're able to get into their email, and some of the other smaller systems that are testing, and those systems are all created automatically because of processes we put in place that wasn't, that weren't available to us in our legacy system. One of the really cool things we've been able to do is our Google Documents are now able to be imported into Infinite Campus, or we can push some things out to Google Docs. For example, our professional development points, our teachers are giving, are able to put into a Google Document what professional development points they have, they feel they've earned, and we have a process that allows us to import that right into Infinite Campus, so the teacher could look right at their points and see how they're doing. We've also allowed us to automatically take some of our substitutes, and without having to take them through a process of manually importing them every time, they're just, our sub-coordinator will put in that a secretary is working this building for a week or two, and automatically, at the beginning of the day, they have their account ready, created, and they're able to get in. And then at 4 o'clock, it's taken away from them, so that they're, so that the next day, they get up, if they go to a new building, it's right there, ready for them, we don't have to worry about that, we don't have to scramble in the morning, so they're right there. Being a Microsoft database gives us access to a bunch of other tools and programs. For example, with the summer school, we, it didn't have the ability to stop a school request, so the students could request, you know, we've scheduled for 32 children in a driver's ed course. Well, they would have been able to have 100 students like that, but because it was a Microsoft database, we were able to set up a program that when they reached 32 student requests, it stopped any more requests. So those were some of the major opportunities that it being this new system has allowed us, along with the general connections that are going on and are slowly being built out.
So Craig's main job is, he's sort of the under-the-hood guy, you know? So when the interface to the system, the web interface, the stuff that I can get into, many of the other staff can get into, when that doesn't work, or it doesn't have the pieces we want to it, we usually go to Craig and say, okay, lift the lid, go in there and do your thing, reach in and yank the data out, or reach out and stuff the data in where we want it, and we can do that en masse. From a clerical perspective, I'll turn it over to Kathy.
All right. From a clerical perspective, we found out very early on, we started our training already in April of last year. The secretarial staff from each of the buildings were the first to go through the actual training of the system. And we found then that we had a lot of procedure changes to make, not only for our new system, but also the state had thrown some new attendance procedures at us, and we needed to make that all jive. So our learning curve, too, was, we had a very large learning curve, both changing procedures and learning the new system. But now here, we're past first semester, and I think we're all doing really well. Some of the advantages we found through our system was that the student and family information is organized in a very consistent manner. information is organized in a very consistent manner within the system, so it's very easy for us to find. They separate student data from census data, family information. So we're able to look at a student and we're able to look at families a little bit differently, but yet they're connected. So that's very easy for us. We're very, we're able to easily report our information. Again, that's been a learning curve for us because in our legacy system, we had 10 years of building the reports and we had saved them all and we all shared them. Well, now we have a new system. And so we had to learn how to create those reports. But we're all creating those reports, we're sharing them with each other and it's becoming very easy. One of the examples that I really wanted to use is our communication preferences. You'll all remember that we just recently received an open records request. Well, the data team actually put on a new tab in Infinite Campus that was called Communication Preferences. And as the secretaries got those forms in from the parents at the beginning of the year, they filled out that tab. Well, as a result of that, when that open records request came in, we were able to easily run a report on that information and determine whose information we could share. The other advantage of that is the Communication Preference tab can be seen by teachers within their classroom, so they know which children can be photographed. It's right at their hands. They can see that. Add reports can be run on that as well, both from a district perspective and a classroom or a school perspective.
Kathy, how long did it take you to pull the data that, from the open records request?
Less than five minutes.
And, and that was a custom feature that we put in to Infinite Campus?
Yes.
That's the other thing, is we can kind of customize this one. You couldn't really very easily customize the previous system without incurring some cost of having people coming in to do it. So that, that's been a big advantage for us. Not all districts did that. We had some phone calls from some other districts that were using Infinite Campus who were wondering how we captured that data because they were capturing it in a separate place. So that's been a big advantage.
And again, following the line with what else you've heard from everyone else is the Messenger piece of Infinite Campus. Very easily able to communicate with a small group or a large group. A couple of examples of how we use Messenger at a district level was Dr. Benmack sent out the communication to all parents regarding our Communication Preference Form in the open records request. I sent out information to the entire district about summer school registration. We, in both of those instances, we sent out over 11,000 pieces of communication and it went out in less than three minutes.
At no cost, compared to doing a district-wide mailing for how many thousand dollars. So that, that was a big plus.
And with our, with our Messenger piece, you have the option to post the communication out on the portal, send out an email, you can send a text, and you can send, you can phone also. It just depends, you can set it up and it's very individual to the messages that you're sending out. So it's a very powerful process. The other thing is, is that we're able, the secretaries are able to create labels, envelopes, and letters right from within Infinite Campus. No longer is, no longer do you have to take the information down to Excel and merge it within Word. You can do it right from within the system. They send out their like notices regarding behaviors or regarding attendance right from within the system, very, very easy to use. Another thing that you've heard is a summer school course request. The secretaries said that, actually, they helped parents the other night at conferences and a number of them contacted me and said, "This is really easy. Our parents really like this." And then, from my perspective, the state reporting aspect, I take care of the state reporting, the student information system, and that's been made a lot easier for us as well. The process of uploading and downloading the information between the district and the state. So those are the positives that we've, that we've seen.
And because of the good work of this part two, we haven't had to use any announcement for school closing.
So, you know, and, and I can't thank Kathy and Craig enough because our, our conversion has gone smoother than some other districts' conversions and largely it's been because they did a lot of pre-work on the front end. We identified some problems that other districts are just running into now concerning transcripts and other things. In fact, we were getting worried because Craig was identifying problems and we're hearing from some other large districts that were on the same implementation scheme as we were and they weren't having problems. So we were kind of wondering, you know, is this a test? Come to find out, we did call the problems right, we did get it done, fixed in advance, and now those other districts, as they're running things like transcripts, are realizing that they should have dealt with this a little bit earlier. So that's a, a big advantage and special thanks to them. But just to give you an idea, on the campus messenger side, we use this to provide both regular and emergency communications. Many of you've received some of these. The messages are usually delivered within minutes. It's a, this is a big one. It's available on all schools for the first time. Previously, the Messenger pieces were only in select schools. I think the high schools, day and night schools have it?
Uh, no, the middle school's still happening.
Okay, so we have two schools covered. So if there was an emergency communication, a, a gas main break, whatever, we had no way of really communicating other than using Twitter to get to our parents. So that, that's a, that is really a big advantage. And mainly, for the small schools or even the elementary schools, they couldn't afford it. There's no way they could have afforded a Messenger option because they were very pricey. Parents get to set their own preferences, which, which is a, is a blessing and a curse if they set them wrong. Sometimes that can be a, something we have to help them with is to get them set back, but they can change it at any time. Options include inbox, email, voice, and text, any or all, so they can grab any of them. But just to give you some numbers, so far, we have 18,393 people, if we were to do a straight recipient count, if I was to send a message right now, the, it would go to 9,400 process inboxes, 12,259 emails would be sent, voice, I'd send 36,000 voice messages and text messages. And we don't have to, to pay for any of that, you know, here locally. That's, that's all part of our cost of Infinite Campus. We can go ahead and send that at that time. And you can type in and it will create a voice message from whatever it is you type in, so it's not like you have to record yourself. Although if Stan wanted to do that, or if I wanted to do that, or anybody else, we can do that as well. We can upload a, a voice file. The parent portal, it's a little different. Campus Messenger goes to everybody and they set up their communications preferences. Parent portal is when parents actually log into the Infinite Campus system. Now, there's two pieces. Parents get the Infinite Campus app that runs on their iPhone or their Android phone. And that's a real skinny down version of Infinite Campus. That's why some of the kids have a hard time seeing their grades if they're just using that, or they miss, they, they click on a missing assignment and it goes away. But if they go to the main system, they can see it all.
Yep, and to, to piggyback off on that, also for students, part of the issue is, is like the actual report or the report card that's generated in PDF, you cannot view on the app. So that's like one of the downsides of the app. So if you really want to see the report card or the progress report, you have to log in via, you know, whatever your device is besides the app in order to get that. And so that's something that we're hoping, we're going to continue to get the word out there, is that you can't use the app to do that.
The app is meant to be a quick look and a quick push, you know, sort of. It's kind of the same thing of using the Facebook app versus logging into Facebook. There's a little bit of a difference there.
Or mobile banking.
Or mobile banking, same thing. Now, parents do request changes. We get about 15 to 20 a month that the parents get to request that we used to have to involve multiple clerical staff to, in order to process any of those changes. Now, we can do it all through the system. Just to give you an idea of some of the numbers, I'm not sure if you can read all that, but this was just pulled for a five-day window. This was 3-2 to 3-6, about a week or so ago. We had 5,200 parent logins. We're getting an average of about 7,200 a week. If you, what really amazes me is the average weekly logins for students at the high school level. Freshmen, 13, 28 a week. Sophomores, about 1,300. Juniors, about 1,200. And seniors, about 1,000. So that just gives you an idea of how many people are hitting the actual portal. And we can run that for any span of time to see if there's spikes or drops. And we know exactly how many people have accounts, so. Anyone around the 70% mark have accounts, which I'm astonished. I didn't think we'd hit that many that fast. I thought we hit the 50% mark pretty quick, but we're up into the 70s, which is really quite interesting.
How come none of the elementary schools, the student log, oh, because they're, okay, student logins.
Right.
Like 4K or kindergarten.
They don't have an iPhone yet.
Not yet. Somehow, there's some first graders who have a six average weekly, so that's kind of interesting. But, so that's our usage of parent portal for that week. And data analysis update, you know, this is the big thing. Back in 1112, when we did this, we realized none of the stuff was connected. I knew this tool existed. I had used it in a previous district and, and in the time it would take, the, the story I often tell is I was in a board meeting and one of our board members in my previous district said, "You know, we ought to have test scores just like, just like Shawna. They're about the same ethnicity as us, the same everything, and their test scores are higher. They do much better with their ELL kids than we do." And he said, "We should go to them, replicate what they're doing." And the superintendent, I was sitting over there and the superintendent gave me a look and I was already on the system running this analysis piece, to kind of say, "Okay, let's take a look at that." We had pulled the data up and he was correct, but their primary ethnicity that they were servicing was Native American. Ours happened to be Hispanic. So our students had ELL levels that were far lower, theirs were all sixes and sevens on the ELL scale. So that was an example of just being able to get real-time data real quick in the middle of a meeting. But this system will allow us to pretty much track. How many, how many different assessments are we currently storing inside here?
We have 171 in there right now and with a couple of communications I've received, we're probably going to add another 30 or 40 within a week or two.
So those will be able to be analyzed against any other criteria that we have. The ones, I mean, I just, I just did an example on really quick, but this was just an example of GPAs broken down by ethnicity, you know? And, and what you can see there is in that system, and it, and the best thing about this system is all the rights for any user track with the system. So you, as a board member, could look at this data, but you couldn't get any of the individual student data because you don't have the rights. Yet, if, if I'm the high school principal, I have the rights to be able to see who each one of those bar graph, what group of cohort of students would that large blue bar represent by parent on it. So there's a really, you know, this is the, the classic statement around us having a new car, not quite knowing what are all the pieces yet. This is one piece that we have not yet explored because we just loaded those assessments in. And this is getting us that one step closer to a data warehouse and actually having data dashboards that are live, real-time, and always on our website.
And from a teacher perspective, our teachers are currently entering in a lot of data and you can, and you can hear them say, "It takes a lot of time." There are teacher features that they're going to be able to run reports. We want to get to the, we want to get to the point that our teachers are using the bells and the whistles to actually look at data and make instructional decisions and, and get off the worrying about just entering this, you know, just entering the data. We want them to be able to really actually use it. So we're going to be working on some of those things.
And the end goal is to have predictive analytics built into the system. So that what we do is we know as students come in, the system says, "This is the students you have coming in. These were the educational treatments that were shown most effective for this student based upon their, everything, their demographics, everything." Now, we know not all students are the same, but this makes us look a lot more like the medical profession in some ways than we have in the past, so. So that's the, the analysis piece. So future improvements. First off, you heard some of the needs for grade book improvements. We have those very well identified. Barry Brier, who is one of the, the lead development people for Infinite Campus, came here and Julie was kind enough to gather a bunch of our teachers in this room and they actually were showing their grade book to him, saying, "This is what works for me, this is what doesn't work for me." They know everything that, that has been mentioned and they have, they realize they have to fix some of those things. The big one is the freezing the column and row headings, and that is already done. That is in development, it is not released in the current version of the product, but they've guaranteed that one is done in play. It'll probably come out in May. Revisions to grading and reporting K-12, there's probably, I would say, three to four big feature changes we need to make in order to reduce the time load for our teachers, especially at the high school level. It has to happen. And, and they know exactly what those three or four features. The grading by student piece and the, if I have a student who missed work, I have to be, I should be able to click on that, that particular missing assignment, get an expansion, put my three or four scores in, or five or six scores in, hit get out of there without having to wait. So that's a big piece.
So along with, along with the features request, we've already been doing work with our current, or getting prepped for our scheduling for next year for 15, 16, and we're putting things in place. It's, it's, if we would have known this before, we would have done it before. Now we're putting those things to streamline, make views easier, et cetera, so that when we start the fall, we're hitting the ground running and our teachers are not experiencing the time suck that they currently are. So along with features and changing things on our end, teachers are going to see drastic improvements in the fall. So you anticipate that by September, Doris won't have that problem?
Correct. That is our...
That is our goal, that is our goal, because that's the last thing we want, is for our teachers to be spending time on that and not spending time on teaching and learning.
And there's more than her. Actually, there's a...
When I was, when I said her name, I was speaking to her globally and...
Yes, the global.
The global.
What about some of the things like having it add the scores automatically or, as she was talking about, or...
Yep, those are, those are all the, the features and the pieces that we're putting together. Some of them are actual Infinite Campus features and some of them are set up on our end that we're going to redo for the fall. So there's, there's specific ones that we're going to have ready to go in the fall.
All right, on the topic, Dr. Benmack, could you give us maybe 60 seconds? I have no sense of whom Infinite Campus is in the world. Are they owned by some software giant? And the idea that somebody can come in and work with an individual school district seems amazing. Like the financial resources and the HR resources they bring to bear?
They, they're an interesting story. They're, Charlie Cratch is their CEO and he started it, he was a person who had retired in his twenties. He made probably quite a bit of money in the medical field writing some software and he retired. And he got bored. So what he did is he became the technology director for a school district in Minnesota, and I'm trying to figure out which one it was. It was, it was right out, it was Blaine, Blaine, Minnesota?
An Okie, an O'Connell district.
Okay, so he became a technology director there and he wrote Infinite Campus for them because he's like, "You guys, none of your stuff is connected." So he wrote it for them. And I remember, I was in Manasha at the time and we were selecting a new software and we wanted something that was web-based. I know it's a new concept, but we figured if it was web-based, people would be able to use it at home and, and we were at the joint convention, the school boards convention and they had a booth and we looked and it was indeed web-based and they had, they were fairly small at the time. They have exploded since that time and virtually every large school district in the state of Wisconsin now uses them. They were the ones that were going to be selected for the state student information system until the joint finance committee gutted the funding for it and sent that back to the... They never took, by the way, they still have been awarded that contract. The state never took the contract away from them, they just cut the funding to be able to fund it. So what is interesting is they still got over half the students in the state, you know, our district, Janesville, there's a whole series of districts that had gone over the span, span of the past couple of years. So they've grown quite a bit. They have some of the largest school districts in the nation now, especially one outside of Las Vegas. I forget, Clark County, which is, do we know how many students that was?
I don't know.
I can't, I couldn't either.
It's like one of the largest school districts, because they can scale because of the, of the foundation that their database is built on. They also, if you look on there, one of the things that they're moving to is they realize the future of student information systems is not student information. It's becoming a learning management system, so the students are using it daily. And then they just have a student information system underneath supporting it, doing all the stuff we've been talking about here for the past 45 minutes. So, interesting vision. I don't know of anybody else who has that, but they're a very visionary company. But on occasion, you run into the thing where you, you run into a situation where the grade book can do anything. The problem is, we've asked it to do everything at the same time laying on top of itself and part of it is us, part of it is them, and they know the pieces that are them and they're working on fixing those right now.
Why isn't the gradebook transferring when a student transfers from one class to another?
Um, the Infinite Campus calls, or you can call when you transfer grades from one class to another, it's called trailing grades. And so when you start looking at, the whole premise behind a, a gradebook or with scoring with students is that it should be differentiated or should be individualized. And so in a gradebook, if you actually have like student groups or you maybe scored one and you had one assignment for one class, but you maybe had something different for another, if, it's designed not to automatically dump, called trailing grades. And so that's a philosoph, that's a philosophy behind their underpinnings that they don't do trailing grades. And so that's, that has been, um, quite a challenge for us kindergarten through twelfth grade, because even if you switch classrooms like from second grade to a second grade across the hall-
Right.
-your grades don't trail. But the other thing is your, your assignments from one teacher to another might not exactly match up. Sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. And so because of that, that's why Infinite Campus chooses not to do trailing grades.
You're not even guaranteed, like, if I had-
So what-
-four sections of chemistry and somebody went from my second section to my third section, the only way that would work is if every single assignment that I did was identical and, and we do assignments more complex than even-
So were they manually then entered by the new teacher?
There's a couple of ways to do it.
We have a, we have a protocol, we have a protocol to do that and we in no way, shape, form, expect a teacher to re-enter like all of those grades. And so what you can do is you, you put in a, you put in a specific transfer assignment, so to speak, for that student that'll pick up the scoring where that student left off when they entered in. So you wouldn't back-enter all of the grades. So we have a protocol, we have a protocol to do that. Is it, is it ideal? No. Would we like to be able to transfer things over and have trailing grades? Yes, but we've, we've come with a workaround for that.
Yeah, if I was to design, if I had a magic wand and was to design something, I'd like to be able to see the grades, be able to import it and the system be intelligent enough to look at all the assignments and, and highlight, "Hey, by the way, assignment number three and seven, they don't match." Yeah, fix those before I'm gonna let the grades come in.
Before we started this, um, we had, I remember one gentleman and a later occurrence with a woman, uh, who came in and actually spoke before us and they, I guess I'm looking at the, the other systems we had and the loose ends that we had. Um, and in two of these cases, the parents had sent, they'd either been on the website and sent messages or, or had, uh, sent emails, um, and the emails went nowhere. And they didn't know that and, you know, time was going by and no one was, the teachers weren't answering their, uh, their questions and, and they came in here and they were, you know, extremely angry.
And I met with him after that and we looked at that and that was tying in WebGrader with, uh, Infinite Campus, or no, sorry, WebGrader and Skyward, um, back when those two systems, I think one department was using WebGrader at the high school at the time. Right? And the system, he, he was right. He was sending the messages, but nobody was checking the messages on WebGrader.
Do we have that problem?
That problem is resolved.
Yeah.
So I guess all of our teachers are checking for, uh, uh, these messages that might come in then?
Parents will, in most cases, send the messages directly to the teacher's email now instead of it being in a subset of the system. So, um, when you, like, when I send a message, I had to be very careful. When I sent out that open records message, the reply to address, I put in, "Do not reply." Not because I didn't want people to reply to me necessarily, but I was not necessarily, it was not a, uh, something that they, everybody in that community would reply back to. If it was, if I was a teacher, it would've just defaulted and put my email address in there. So somebody who would've, would've gotten the email in their home email system, they would, if they would've had a question, they'd hit reply, boom, it doesn't go to IC, it goes right to our Google mail and the teacher would pick it up from there.
And even though we do still have other systems that, uh, interact with, uh, Infinite Campus, those systems don't have these legacy pieces floating around out there that-
No, and even as we look at future systems, that's gonna be something we're gonna really take a look at. They have to have some ability to link in to our existing databases. It's called SAML compliant. Um, and what it does is it makes sure that, that our identity pieces of who people are in this district, they will be able to pull that directly, so we, we don't have to involve human beings. So if somebody gets hired tomorrow morning, gets put into the system at nine, at nine oh five, every single service in Oshkosh they have access to. We're not there yet, but part of it is because some of the, some of the software, uh, doesn't do that and we have to build in special hooks. Um, we're joining a coalition of school districts around the state that are basically going to demand that of our vendors and say, "Look, if you wanna get into Oshkosh with a product, you better be able to hook up, have, run standardization of your databases for user creation or we're gonna really, it'll be a ding against you if we're considering you." Um, the other interesting thing on an improvement side is because of their work for learning management system, one of the things, and this is not so much, this is not so much gonna be around teachers, but more so around the rest of the staff using it. If somebody, uh, is going to use the system for a given function, there's gonna be a built-in training that comes with the system. And then you pass an assessment and once you pass the assessment, the tool rights automatically get turned on. And it's not available yet, but I saw their beta version of that and it looks pretty impressive. We can also tie some of that into how we're assessing kids later as well. So we're at the beginning of this. It, it's gonna grow quite a bit, so. That's all we had.
That was, that was a lot.
That was a lot.
Other questions?
But it's a big, it's, we do a lot with it, so it's a big piece.
Has there been any history of security concerns with this particular product?
No, not to date. Uh, we were more hosted, uh, they are very, very, very careful around their security concerns, so they have all the highest certification. Um, they, they pass, uh, all the tests around that. Um, it's, uh, even, even our Gmail application, we had some stuff over the weekend where a few teachers were kicked out of our Gmail system, a few staff, because their accounts had gotten hacked. Google found out about it on a Sunday and all of a sudden we saw people for our accounts that were, were detected as sending out spam, got them all cut off. So this is a very similar system in that I am, I'm far less worried. The only security concern we have at this point is if a student finds out about a teacher's password. If a teacher leaves the password out or a student guesses the password. And, and a big piece of this, the next phase is instituting decent password management protocols. I really, you know, one thing users don't like, myself included, is if all of a sudden every ninety days, you have to change your passwords, right? And they have to be unique. We've all gone through this, but we should really, we're gonna be instituting that. But what we wanted to do first was connect all these together so I can change it here and it goes out and populates everything so that, that teachers and students can now change their password. That's another new thing for Oshkosh. We had it before where students couldn't change their passwords. Well, it wasn't that hard to figure out a student's password and once you did, you had it all. So right now we're turning on that ability so our students can manage their own passwords. It's gonna become a part of our digital citizenship curriculum. Um, good password management skills, and we're gonna be teaching them that from early grade on.
Is the security for the bar chart that you talked about earlier something that you can set, um, by, uh, a person's position or would you have to set them individually by the people? I mean, I guess, is it gonna be labor intensive because you have to go through and, and set everybody's, or can you say, "Well, principals get this and teachers get that and ..."
This has one of the most granular sort of user rights that I, that I've ever seen. And it used to be even easier 'cause the tools weren't so complex, but it's expanded since when I actually had to do the rights setup myself. But, yeah, we do it by groups. We try to do it by groups. We rarely, if ever, give individual rights to a person because we want people to be part of the group and then when we take you out of a group, the rights evaporate with you. So, good question.
Any other?
It's been a lot of good information shared tonight and I appreciate the work that has gone into this report and the efforts of the teachers, um, who always have full place, along with administrators, uh, for being here tonight. One of the things I had asked for when I requested this workshop was that we include surveys of parents, students, and staff members. So I was expecting to hear those tonight, although I thought, um, there was a quick turnaround from the time I asked for the staff report until this evening, but I hope at some point we do get input from parents. There were some speculative statements that I was picking up on that we think parents are doing this, we think parents are doing that, but we need to go to the parents and we need to go to the students and we need to go to all the staff members. As I've gone to more and more workshops of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, I hear that and I see that in a lot of their workshops. They emphasize continuous improvement and going to all the stakeholders, not just a small representative sample, although the people here tonight were outstanding. Uh, but we need to include all of the people, uh, just like we give people the opportunity to share information on the starting times of the high schools. Um, so I'm hoping at some point in the future, uh, that part of my request will be addressed and we will, not for me, but for the parents out there who have expressed concerns, obviously, to several of the board members and whose students are at stake here. I've heard concerns that they, they couldn't get GPA averages and this was a big problem for seniors who were applying for colleges and universities. Um, being frustrated because they got a, a generic meth message about getting assignments turned in and so a very dutiful, uh, parent I know had contacted the school and said, "Oh, I didn't mean your son, it's somebody else's child." But they didn't know that from, from the message. So I, I just wanna make sure that our parents and our students, as well as the entire staff population have a chance to weigh in. Thank you.
Any more else?
I guess I'd like to hear what David has to say.
Sure. Okay. Um, so I actually used Infinite Campus yesterday, I'm applying for a scholarship and, um, one thing that I found that was really interesting was, uh, again, there's different tools that you can then use. Uh, I could go into reports and then print out unofficial transcript, I guess with Skyward. I know this comes with age, but I just didn't know how to do anything really else beforehand. Um, really, the mobile app is nice. Um, I, I use that quite often as well as, um, checking the grades. Yesterday I did like a little check with my grades 'cause, um, quarter three is coming up, so I, I wrote them all down. I did have to do a little bit of picking and then calculating to see what it was, so that was a problem, but, um, sounds like that's going to be fixed in the near future, so. It's really nice, very smooth.
Good.
Other comments? Questions? None, thank you very much. Next, the Sheldon Nature Center. Sue Schnoer.
Good evening. Um, I think between Stan and I, this is probably one of the first projects we started working on when I first joined the district. I gave you some background in the staff report, um, but I guess to summarize, there's a group of individuals that, at a committee that kind of manages the Sheldon Nature Center. Um, they take care of the maintenance, they kinda do the planning, they keep it up, um, and they are concerned that future boards will not be as favorable of the Sheldon Nature Center as the current board is. Um, they wanted to try to put some things in place to keep future boards from selling the property or building a school on the property. Um, so we've been working on this for quite some time. Um, one of the first things that we thought they could do is become part of the Northeast Central Land Trust and that fell apart for a variety of reasons. Um, and so the next step we thought we would take was to put a deed restriction on the property. Um, and it's a short-term solution and I, and we call it a short-term solution because if you don't put a deed restriction on the property, when the property is originally transferred to the board, if you, if you put on a deed restriction now, the future boards could take it off. Um, it's complicated and it's a process, but future boards could, could do that. So that is the downside of doing a deed restriction. But it is a short-term measure to show the Sheldon Nature Center group that you, as a board, are, feel strongly about this. And in the long term, they can still continue to pursue being part of the Northeast Central Land Trust or maybe even looking at other land trusts. And so that's kinda where we sit right now. The process would be as if the board is, is in favor of that. Um, this has to be on the agenda for a future board meeting and you have to leave a session for public input on this topic. Um, and then it's just a matter of passing a resolution and then working with legal counsel to have that deed restriction put in place.
And I would just comment that Sue and I have been, uh, regular participants in working with them. These are delightful, um, neighbors to the school and, um, very caring individuals. Their dedication, uh, they meet, um, monthly, uh, making sure that, um, their work is together and, uh, truly are, um, caring about, um, maintaining the facility. Um, when they get into serious issues with, um, maybe needing some heavy equipment to fix something after a heavy rainstorm or something, they contact us and we work with our facilities folks to make sure that, um, it happens for them. And, um, and they're really respectful to the intent of the, um, of the Sheldon family to, um, maintain that, um, asset and, uh, work cooperatively with, uh, with Kirby Schultz and his staff at, um, Oakwood to make sure that, um, uh, it's really beneficial to children, but then it certainly is beneficial to, um, the entire community as a wonderful place to be. So, um, I, I think, I believe at one point in time, Matt, you and I met with them, I know John-
We did.
Uh, John and, uh, John Lindberger and I met with them over time and we continue to have a good trusting relationship with them. And this is really a demonstration that we ask of the board, of a demonstration of trust and good faith in that relationship.
One of the things that I like about this, I was hoping that we could obviously become part of the trust with this as before, but, um, one of the things when I took a look at this, that, you're right, it is a temporary solution, but at the same time, I believe on the, if, if they try to extinguish this, it's, there's a window of sixty days of public advance notice. So if a future board were to try to eradicate this, that there would be sixty days in there of which the public could, uh, address the situation. So at least there is some kind of hurdle for, for a future board to sit there and do this, so.
I agree.
And I think, um, uh, this demonstration of trust and I think from the standpoint of, um, uh, it would be, um, politically so unwise for future boards to reverse this effort or try to, um, demolish a very limited nature area, um, that, um, I think the political consequences would outweigh the possibility of it occurring, but it's, um, I think it's a healthy intervention.
Yeah, I'd definitely support that, I would, that area, so like, that's just like a, my childhood, so.
Yeah.
Got a soft spot for that area.
It's our backyard.
Yes. And, and I, I can't think of a more dedicated group of citizens who, um, we continue to work with and appreciate them most.
So this will come back for us then as a resolution?
Yes, correct. I'm not sure if it'll be on the second March meeting or not. I want to meet with them to make sure that, they, I've shared this with them, but I haven't heard any feedback from them yet, so I wanna make sure that this is, is truly okay with them. And then I, I know that legal counsel said that the, the board meeting where this is on the agenda, there has to be an opportunity for public comment, so I'm not sure what kind of notices go with that. So I'll need to work some of those details out before it actually appears on the agenda. So it'll either be on the second March meeting or maybe the second April meeting.
More than likely, probably the second April to have a chance to meet with them because they always meet, um, the first Wednesday of every month and they are so consistent except for the, for a major holiday.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Don't go anywhere. Uh, next one is the budget solution order.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, I included all of this information in your packet, but I thought I would just at least review it very quickly. Um, from the, from the revenue standpoint, um, we're assuming no per pupil increase. As you know, we're governed by the revenue limit formula. Um, last year there was at least a seventy-five dollar per pupil increase. This year, the governor's budget has zero. Um, and because we're a declining enrollment district, over a three-year rolling average, we're declining and even though in the year of the decline, you're held harmless, but over the three-year rolling average, you're not held harmless, so we're actually losing revenue by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, and then in the last estate budget, they gave a per pupil aid of a hundred and fifty dollars per pupil. They're taking that away, so that's, um, almost one point five million. So between the two of them, we have a loss of revenue of almost one point six million dollars. On the expenditure standpoint, um, for salary and benefits, I'm projecting a one point six-two CPI increase. That was recently, um, put out on the WERC webpage, so that's a final number for July first settlement dates. Um, as you know, the new salary schedule structure that we implemented for teachers calls for an eight-hundred-dollar increase if they reach their, um, district point levels. Um, I have to estimate that every teacher is going to make that, so that's included in this budget. Last year you approved a new salary schedule for OPEA and also we've been doing step increases for NTEA, which has gone a long way in improving the morale of that group. Um, so if you take all of those into consideration, that's about one point seven million, almost one point eight million. Um, and then on the benefit side, there's FICA and WRS that go with that one point seven million dollars and I'm projecting an eight percent health insurance increase. Uh, we're on a January one renewal and we're going to be meeting soon with, um, our associated benefits to talk about either plan changes or negotiating with GHT or kind of seeing to talk about either plan changes or negotiating with GHT or kind of seeing where we're at with that. We're hoping the clinic has been very successful, but I'm not sure if the first year is going to have that much of an impact on our rates. This is a little on the high side, because when I calculated the 8%, I was thinking all year, but it's a January 1 renewals, so that is a little on the high side. But all these numbers are variable anyway right now. But that is a little on the high side, because I was projecting the 8% over the whole year rather than just the second six months. So if you take all of that into consideration, the total budget impact is about 4.7 million. Just some assumptions I want to share. No change in enrollment, so I kept zero enrollment, no decrease, no increase. I didn't include any voucher expenditure assumptions. As you know, part of the governor's budget includes a provision for changing the vouchers or increasing the number of vouchers. I didn't include any of those assumptions in this projection. I didn't include any increase in budgets besides compensation, so nothing for utilities or transportation or any of those. But I think with projecting health insurance over the whole year, there's enough of a cushion to take into consideration some of those other things. Plus, it's still very early in the budgeting process. And there's no consideration for savings. I didn't put, you know, we don't know how many retirements we're going to have this year, how much attrition we're going to have this year, or any other potential savings. None of that's been forecasted in this, too. It's just a really rough look at where we're at.
I guess in addition to this, I would like to add that the community sounding board met on Tuesday, and that's the city, the county, the university, Fox Valley Tech, Chamber of Commerce, and the school district. And at that meeting, we did discuss also the future of CAP, which is right now very much in limbo, and which would, basically the university is looking to us and saying, well, you know, we, the university picked it up this year, picked up the tab for CAP, and that's why CAP was able to continue. It generally was paid for by the, well, at least in part by the parents of those who participated. But in the future, with the change to the laws concerning CAP, which is by the way a 40-year-old program that's been working great, we are going to be asked to foot the bill for basically anyone who takes a CAP course. And therefore, we are, in addition to this 4.7 million that you see before you, we are, if we are going to keep this program, going to have to come up with a major piece of money to keep that program running.
Wasn't it 80,000 or something like that?
I think it's a lot more than that.
That was at 50%, so it'd be probably 160 minimum.
I have some additional information. This school year, if we would have paid for the credits that our students took, we had 905 students registered, we had 905 classes that students registered for between Ashkish North and West. And so if we would have paid what we were supposed to pay under course options, it would have been somewhere around $485,000. And then looking at a reduced rate, so like if we would have had the students pay for anything above the two courses, it actually would have been somewhere around $266,000. The CAP program and the UW system understands that that is something that they're not, we will back out of the program, because there is no way that we can support a quarter of a million, half a million to quarter million dollars to do that. And so CAP is not interested in discontinuing their program. We're not disinterested in doing that either. So based on that, they know we have to come to some type of compromise that's going to be reasonable, that's going to help them sustain their program and actually keep those offerings. I was very heartened by a conversation that I had today with a member of the CAP office at UWO, and that they really are looking at a way to make sure that it is affordable for both students and for the district that stays within our budgets. It's not going to be without a cost, but it's not going to be, they know it can't be a quarter of a million dollar price tag.
And the chancellor reported to us at that same meeting that Matt was referring to, is that they have been granted, as have all the universities, been granted permission to negotiate.
Yes.
To create an accessibility without being locked in to the established tuition rates. So that is the other half of the good news equation that we need to look at, bearing in mind that we need to always remind in our negotiation position is that they're assisting us in investing in training our teachers is an important task that we should be paying for. And on the other side, it is our teachers who we're employing who are delivering the instruction, and that we shouldn't have to be paying for a second time. And so that's kind of the opening barry of the discussion, because I totally, being experienced only this in three years here, but having previous experience in Minnesota, this is such a wonderful program for students and parents, and for broadening the intellectual base of our graduates, we can't let it go, and so we need to find some common ground with them.
Right. And I'm confident that we're going to be able to do that without it adding that significant amount to our budget.
Sure. That would be good.
When we talk about that strategic goal of equity, it seems that this CAP program fits that so well, because it's an equalizer.
Right, absolutely.
In the sense of it applies to all students of any ethnic background and ability level, and whether they would be first-time college students within their family or represent multi-generations. And so I'm hopeful that smarter heads will figure out a way to make this work in the best interest of students.
And also remember that not only CAP, that we have dual enrollment options with Fox Valley Technical College.
Correct.
That we have found really good partnerships in a way to do that are mostly cost, are mostly cost neutral, and are on the very, on the plus side of benefit for students. And so dual enrollment is absolutely one of our goals under 5D for students being college, career, and community ready. Having those opportunities for post-secondary is a high priority. So we will, we have, we're budget conscious, but we also want to keep those opportunities intact for students. So we're on it.
Thank you.
I was in Madison today, and there is a little bit of optimism that they have the ear of some legislators, legislators, but I think it is too early to be overly optimistic or too early to be overly pessimistic either. So, you know, I think this is one of these budgets that we're going to have to wait till the bitter end to see what's going to happen.
Sure. And this evening, you had in front of you from the board, which I don't intend to go into extensive detail, but wanting to give the board some beginning thinking processes regarding the news that Sue brings to us, and it really relates to a number of key issues. One is my concern that we not regress and go back to wage freezes again. That creates an environment where we're playing catch-up again, because we simply destroy both morale, as well as the issue of dealing with catching up with our neighbors. It's just unacceptable to do that, which we did for three years with teaching staff, and deal with that. The first point was the issue of legacy costs. A number of individuals, including at least one of our local legislators, always talks about legacy cost issues, and in the issue of post-employment retirement insurance contributions. And I suggest that, and we have a legal opinion attached to that, that really tells us that the likelihood of prevailing in that issue or doing it, let alone I, to me, I really believe that it's an issue of trust and ethical action on the part of the school district. When promises are made, promises should be kept, and that tackling that issue would be inappropriate. I commented on the salary increase issue of trying to avoid freezing. The health insurance is an issue, and Sue commented on the fact, you know, the ideal world, we have, we know we're committed to 7% through December 31st. If we sound a way to get to a magical zero effective next, zero increase next January 1st, our average for the year would be 3.5%. That's a drain, but it's something that, and there are a number of issues that I think we need to be very careful of, the simple solutions to complex problems that should not occur. One is we are already 3% higher than our neighbors and around on employee contributions to health insurance that's generally running at 12%. We're at 15%, and we need to avoid and, you know, target trying to get with our neighbors. Secondly, Mike Nault has done extensive work with our insurance consultants on looking at varying options, and most ought to bring that number down. And the issue that we struggle with is the fact that we then are suddenly having to tackle the potential of looking at increasing deductibles or increasing copays. We're already on the high end, we don't want to be disturbing that further, and we'll continue to explore that. I know from my past experience that the easiest way, although painful, by maintaining and even eventually maybe getting to a 12% contribution, is we have to narrow the provider network. And we have to identify, maybe developing an exclusive relationship with one in combination with our onsite, our nearside clinic, with one provider, with locking in the prices and narrowing to one insurance provider. Because if we're going to get our numbers down, we have to shrink the providers and the choice. But we would provide a stable benefit for employees by dealing with that issue. And that's just really an experience factor, speaking on that. I also outlined the issue of non-personnel cost. Sue has alluded to that as well. You know, that's really only 20% of our budget. Those are small pieces. Some of the things we don't control, it really are the cost of fuel, electricity, and utilities. We try our very best to pre-pie natural gas. Electricity, we can't pre-buy, but we deal with those rates. And we also know that water and sewer utility services with the city, for all of us as residents, also are going up and dealing with those, so those are out of our control. I would recommend, and Sue is indicating so, that before we go through a massive painful process, we await watching the legislature to come through the process, so that we delay remember, two years ago, final decisions, it was, as I recall, it was, I was hearing good things about the night of graduation, that things might be coming through at that time, and that we delay immediate action on that. The other issue that I'm concerned about, and I use that in light of the fact that I keep repeating from a number of sources, the fact that we all know that last year, through a number of sources, a collection of fund balances were being collected across the state. And part of the motivation behind losing the 150 for at least one year was the belief that somehow or another we have to trim back fund balances on the part of school districts because they're far too high. Well, I didn't ever believe they'd be too high, but I lived through having, in my last district, in my first year, with a district, with a budget about 20% higher than this one, I lived through a year with only $300,000 fund balance. That was not a happy thing, and I fortunately left it with 7 to 8 million dollar fund balance. But that's a nightmare. But the issue is that I'm suggesting that we take a look at, as we approach this issue, taking a serious look at potentially adjusting the fund balance to about 10% or about $10 million, and use that in this first year, or in this coming year as offset. But we would still need to cut if we would get anywhere close to or below the 10% or $10 million figure of reductions. But to do that with knowing full well that, as I said last year, we need to approach the issue of having, before last year's referendum, that we will need to be going back again in April of 2016 to the community. And as I state quite clearly, a question that if it would appear that the state of Wisconsin can't come through and find a means to adequately fund our schools, we have to turn to the community and hold their standards and expectations only as the only resource, and ask the community to determine what educational quality standards we should have for the Ashkish School District. If we work on that basis and approach in open and honesty of saying, this is what we're getting from the state, this is the, these are the set of cards we've been handled, handed, I think we need to approach that and look at that. I know that's a difficult decision, a difficult choice eventually for the board, we're not asking for that tonight. We're asking for you to begin thinking about how we can approach this, in all due respect to our employees, and to not tear our community once again apart with the fact that we do have the opportunity, one year and 13 months from now, to going back to the community and saying, this is the school district you want, or this is the school district we can choose to afford, as opposed to dismantling the school district. And I think about all the initiatives that are positively operating in the district right now, that are growing and gaining, and for us to reverse those seems irreconcilable. The other piece that I do not mention in the memo, but I think it was firmly understood, we have not, and we would not consider touching the investment in technology, and the fact that we did not have that as a separate ballot question, but the community approved by 59% the support for both overriding operating referendum, that for funds to fund the schools and to invest in the technology for the coming seven years. And to do anything like that also is a betrayal of trust. So I just put this on your table for consideration. I could not have us walk away with this kind of piece, and I'm glad Sue hadn't had a chance to tell me what she learned in Madison tonight, or today, but I was hearing the same issues. Remember that $150 cut affects every single school district in the state. All those members of the Assembly and the Senate are getting the same feedback, and as many of you have seen, is the resolutions that are coming out from school districts across the state regarding the impact of what that does, let alone not having some dollars for inflationary increases that should be expected if we're going to operate a quality school system. And not just for us, but for every district. So with that, I wouldn't have anything further for tonight, but it's really, it's a painful thing to be in this position once again, and it is truly sad that wisdom doesn't prevail in Madison about the importance of education for every child in the state of Wisconsin.
I'd like to clarify this. Some people are confused because we went to a referendum, doesn't that solve part of this problem? But how the revenue limit formula works, because it's a non-recurring referendum, we get to add that to 3.9 million each year, but it takes it away from the base. So when we start calculating the base for the next year, it takes the 3.9 million out, but then as we get down to the bottom, it adds the 3.9 million back in. So it's not building on 3.9 million on top of 3.9 million each year.
It's just an increase for each of the years individually.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it is, it's really cumbersome, and I've had, on this issue since the budget was announced, I've had more sleepless nights than anyone, because I just believe so much in what we're doing here, and the quality of what we're delivering to our students, and the decency of which we intend to treat our employees to work our way backwards is just unbelievable to think about. So. Other questions?
Just one quick question, point of information. What is the deadline for people who wish to apply for out-of-attendance area for next year?
April 1st, I believe.
Thank you.
I believe that's April 1st. Right. That's external to the district. Internal, we take, we allow transfers anytime.
Right. Thank you.
Sure. Other questions? No, seeing none, thank you very much. Request for future agenda items? Anyone have an item they wish to log as future agenda? No? All right. Announcements? I guess the only thing I'll say is that I forgot to mention that Frank Almond will be playing a 300-year-old Lipinski Stradivarius at his free concert at UWO.
Was that the one that was Tim Carley in the hands of?
Yes, I believe it is. The Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, he was robbed of it, I believe. Other announcements?
Just to reiterate for those who plan to attend the Electrify Your Strings program on Friday night at the Alberta Kimball Auditorium, that starts at 7:00 PM. And for my math teacher and loving friends out there, I'm reminded that this coming Saturday is National Pi Day. That's 3.14, 3.15.
Yes.
We'll play onward, so.
Yes, and actually goes farther than that this year because of the, you can take the time into account as well. Minutes and seconds.
So I just wondered, wish everyone a happy Pi Day.
I thought you were going to make.
Actually, my company does that. People bring in pie on Pi Day. So this Friday, there'll be countless emails coming across about a new pie that's.
When should we come pick ours up?
All right. Other announcements? Seeing none, could I get a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Count the room.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye, Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye, Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye, Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye, Lumberger?
Saganek?
Aye.
Saganek, aye, Wiedenhoff?
Aye.
Wiedenhoff, aye, Motion Security.
We're adjourned.